I've taken many walks along Hinkle Creek Trail over the years. We've hunted for tadpoles, searched for items on the nature scavenger hunt, and enjoyed the beautiful trees. My mom will point out what some of the trees are. We've even had a friend take us on a nature walk and identify some of the plants. A nature center would allow us to take a deeper look at learning about the natural species in our area. This kind of knowledge would help us better take care of our environment and the animals that live among us. Please consider providing a nature center that could serve my family and our community.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Olivia Klein, and she will be followed by Jennifer Lane.
Hello, my name is Olivia Klein, and I am in third grade at Carlson Elementary School. I am eight years old. I live in Folsom in American River Canyon. I'm here today to talk about why it is important to have a nature center. Nature is beautiful, and I think it is important to learn about it with my friends and family. If we could have a nature center, it would be fun to learn about the animals that walked through my neighborhood like the skunks, turkeys, squirrels, deers, and birds. There is also a lot of awesome trees in my neighborhood. I would like to learn all of their names at the nature center. My brother and sister, me and my mom, always go to Hinkle Creek to see the trees and the flowers and see the creek with the fairies, and that is why I would like to have a nature center in Folsom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Well done.
All right, next will be Jennifer Lane, and Jennifer will be followed by Crystal Tobias.
Hi there. Good evening.
You can pick the mic up. Good evening.
I'm back. As most of you know, I was an elementary school teacher with Folsom Cordova School District for many years. I have always taught my class about the value of nature and the environment. I would first introduce them to the ecosystem. All parts are valued in nature and science. I took my students to learn about nature to Effion Nature Center, Coloma, American River, and the many parks and parkways near waterways where we could study birds and other wildlife, including native plants. We live in such a wonderful environment to teach about nature. To respect nature, I believe you must understand its fragility. This is built in with respect. This must be taught. Folsom has long needed its own nature center to teach our children the ways of nature. These children will one day be parents, and the cycle will once again continue. This idea is a win-win for Folsom and its future generations. Why do we need to go to other nature centers when we have the very place to study nature here, our very own City Corporation Yard, right next to Lake Natoma? Let's build our own nature center and take care of this for all our children and others to share this experience. I hope that I have just planted a seed for this idea. I believe that I was put on earth to teach children about this sensitive subject, nature, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Next will be Crystal Tobias, and Crystal will be followed by Rebecca Bornamiza.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and meeting attendees. Happy holidays. I'm Crystal Tobias, longtime city volunteer and activist and co-founder of Friends of Lakes Folsom and Natoma. I want to take a moment to thank the city for their efforts in preserving Folsom's trees, plus all of the other hard work that they do to keep our city clean and safe. Oaks are a keystone species that provide a rich source of food and shelter to many creatures and have a positive effect on the surrounding soil and water. They directly or indirectly benefit a wide range of species, including deer, a variety of small mammals, many bird species, some that are declining, rare, or endangered, reptiles and amphibians, and other organisms. According to Michigan State University, a mature tree is worth $193,250 by generating oxygen, controlling pollution and soil erosion, recycling water, and providing a home for animals. This does not include the value of fruit or lumber. Since I was five years old, I've wanted to live in historic Folsom due to the proximity of the American River's riparian corridor. The greater Folsom area is amazingly beautiful and diverse and is truly a perfect setting for a nature center. Amazingly enough, we have such a center in the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. We are here tonight to strongly encourage the city to continue working towards opening that center to the public, including student groups, and investing in an educational program that would have a lasting positive effect on the people, especially children who visit the center. We have enjoyed working with city staff on a lecture series that, until COVID, was getting quite popular with presentations on mountain lions, coyotes, and Folsom history, among others. We would like very much to continue that partnership. We believe that not only will the good civic-minded citizens of Folsom come out to support the center by volunteering as docents, cashiers, and other support staff, they will also fund a program that would include educational, cultural, and native natural topics using the latest technology. We already have a local nonprofit that has agreed to take donations on behalf of the center. Thank you to Friends of Folsom Parkwayes. As always, I'm happy to chat further with any of you, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of this important issue.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker will be Rebecca Bornamiza, who will be followed by Malkush Godvi.
I'm reading the statement on behalf of Robin Kaplan, who cannot be here tonight. Dear Mayor Kozlowski and city council members, Folsom distinctive by nature, a beautiful motto, but how do we keep our commitment to it? By making sure we implement projects that reflect and sustain the motto we have selected to represent us. As a member of the city's Architectural Review Commission from 1996 to 2008, when the building on Oak Avenue was redesigned to house this much-needed nature center, it won overwhelming approval of the design and intended use by the commissioners. The building was beautifully transformed into the Hinkle Creek Nature Center. However, our much-anticipated educational center never appeared. But thanks to concerned and committed residents like Fred and Sharon Kendall, this nature center still has a strong heartbeat. We cannot miss this opportunity to provide the public with meaningful information about nature and the natural history of our community. What a wonderful opportunity we have to inspire and educate Folsom's youth in a natural environment immersed in water, wildlife, trees, and steeped in a long history of habitation by Native Americans. Please join me in supporting the Hinkle Creek Nature Center and transforming it into a vibrant, educational, and key component of a city that promises nature as its distinction. Sincerely yours, Robin Kaplan.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker will be Malkush Godvi, who will be followed by Sharon Kendall.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Malkush Godvi. I'm a resident of Folsom, and I currently work as an engineer at NTEA. I'm here to support building a nature center at the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. I first time went to the Hinkle Creek Nature Area on the Community Service Day for the poke weed removal project. I met Sharon Kendall there, and she showed me around the nature area and showed me the different vegetation and the fauna that is present there. And therefore, I realized that if there was a nature center there, it would really be helpful in educating the people and the children about the flora and fauna of the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. Therefore, I support, I encourage the city to have a nature center in the Hinkle Creek.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Our last speaker under business from the floor will be Sharon Kendall.
Good evening, Mayor Kablowski, city council members, city manager, and members of the audience here and at home. I'm Sharon Kendall, living in Folsom. Here's what Henry Ford said: "Success of teamwork. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." I love Hinkle Nature Area Park. Hinkle Creek is to Folsom as Central Park is to New York for nature lovers. A group of us has enjoyed working together with staff of your Department of Parks and Recreation. Together, we started a speakers bureau program in 2019. Speakers described coexistence with wildlife and historic characters like Mr. Isaac Hinkle and William A. Leadstaff. We have now, we have so many more presentations planned, for example, Lake Natoma Eagles. And however coronavirus has put our speakers program, we had to postpone it until it becomes safe again. I have started up a first Folsom nature book club, and we have several members now reviewing books on nature and nature, natural history. We have, we want this to be a part of the Hinkle Creek Nature Center. The park needs educated and experienced workers, just like restaurants need help. I am asking for one of the city council members to help monitor parks, trees with us, and become a certified naturalist, as I did this year. We are coming to ask that you open the nature center for Folsom citizens who will be educated and experienced to help support nature conservation and preservation in all Folsom parks. We have invited 25,000 new residents, and we need to share our Folsom values. We have a responsibility to educate them on respecting nature as well as to provide recreation. The drought that drained Folsom Lake has made extra tree and tree mitigation care urgent as an annual community service day is not enough. Our desire for consistent quality of life depends upon listening to the voice of nature. We have the best park staff I know of, beginning with Lorraine Poggiom, Director of Parks and Recreation Department. I appreciate her knowledge, willingness to listen, to educate, experience, or helpful volunteers. I appreciate her kindness, professionalism, leadership in making leaders instead of followers, and ability to work smarter than harder, and her can-do attitude and teamwork mentality. Tim O'Shea, Parks Facility Manager, is a passionate nature lover and listens carefully to concerned citizens about record-breaking drought and its effect on tree maintenance. He has worked on his own time, not only to share his expertise as an arborist, but work right along with the hard-working volunteers. When I report, when I'm reporting an issue to Tim, he asks me, "What do I see?" And then he tells me what he sees, and it gives me a greater understanding from his perspective to understand the whole issue. Mistletoes and other diseases are killing our beautiful mature trees as well. We both see the same thing, we can both see the same thing, but it makes a difference if one is going 40 miles an hour in a car or is being still and close up. Not multitasking, but...
Mrs. Kendall, you're over the normal allotted time by two minutes. Could you please summarize and sum up?
Could I just read one more paragraph?
Summarize and sum up, yes.
Okay. "Focused in on the voice of nature, he has gone above and beyond the call of duty on his days off helping to eradicate the invasive poisonous poke plants that are endangering our unique tapestry of native flora. I believe every Folsom citizen, including the 25,000 new invited residents, have an obligation to think globally and act locally. Funding a nature center is time-sensitive, as it is an investment in quality of life, sustainability for all Folsom parks, including Hinkle Creek Nature Area Park for now and the future generations. In just three decades, planet Earth has lost 50% of its trees. Nature centers and educated and experienced volunteers are key to solving this issue, as well as knowing that when a heritage oak is cut down, it's gone forever. Can we work together to get funding for Hinkle Creek Nature Center for all?"
Terrific, thank you very much.
Okay, that moves us to scheduled presentations. The first presentation, this item is item number one, Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom, proclaiming January 2022 as Tamil Heritage Month in the City of Folsom.
Hello. Welcome, John. John is the president.
There's a switch on top.
There we go. Okay, John Brito is the president of the Sacramento Tamil Mandrum. This proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming January 2022 as a Tamil Heritage Month in the City of Folsom. Whereas the Tamil community of the state of California has made a significant contribution to our city and state's diverse culture and population, including the preservation and promotion of the rich heritage of the Tamil language. And members of the state of California's Tamil community are dedicated to preserving Tamil culture, in part through language schools designed to educate young people about the Tamil language and the Tamil culture for generations to come. And the Tamil language is widely spoken in India, Sri Lanka, Australia, Canada, Singapore, and many communities throughout our nation and world. This language is central to Tamil identity, and the Tamil language is recognized as one of the oldest and longest surviving written and spoken languages in the world, with a traceable history exceeding 2,600 years. And the Tamil community of Folsom is constantly contributing to the economic development of the city and has contributed significantly to bilingual literacy. And during January, members of the Tamil community celebrate Thai Pongal, a four-day harvest festival that coincides with the first day of the month in Thai in the Tamil calendar. And the Sacramento Tamil Mandrum welcomes and encourages all people across the City of Folsom to participate in this celebration and experience their rich culture and inclusive heritage. And the City of Folsom is committed to encouraging and preserving native cultures and heritage within our incredibly diverse communities. Now, therefore, I, Mike Kozlowski, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim January 22 as Tamil Mandrum Heritage Month, proclaimed on this 14th day of December 2021.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Sacramento Tamil Mandrum and the Greater Sacramento Tamil Community, I would like to thank the Honorable City Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and all the council members for declaring the month of January as Tamil Heritage Month. I'm sure many of you are wondering why Tamil Heritage Month is very important for the Tamil community worldwide. During January, members of the Tamil community celebrate Thai Pongal, a four-day harvest festival that is equivalent to Thanksgiving in the U.S. We celebrate nature, beauty, its plenitude, and the farming community for providing to the world. Pongal has been celebrated at least since the ninth century C.E. Sharing gifts and food with friends and neighbors, celebrating the role of farmers' livestock in providing the food for humanity, heading outdoors and enjoying nature, folk dances and traditional Tamil sports such as Jali Kattu, similar to wolf-taming-comprise festivities. January is a great time to celebrate our history, language, culture, and the contribution of the Tamil community to the world and United States, the beautiful country we call home. We have a large Tamil community in Folsom. On behalf of the Tamil community from Folsom and the Greater Sacramento area, I'm privileged to thank you all for this recognition and proclamation. This gesture means a lot to the Tamil community. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Today, we'd like to share a few highlights from history of Tamil language and its literature. First, I'd like to read a few lines of Tamil literature dated 600 B.C. from a book called Pattinappali. These lines clearly relates to these events, what we celebrate today. The meaning of this line is there was a well-civilized city where people from different countries and languages were lived together in harmony and peace. Now, we all witness that song come true in reality again on another side of the world. A recent study of Keelerdi exhibition site by Archaeological Survey of the Indian Government states that possibly Tamil is a 2,600-years-old language, and its history starts from 300 B.C. Approximately 76 billion, sorry, million people around the globe speak the Tamil language. The Tamil language has recognized throughout the world, including in U.S. Many school districts in U.S. have approved the study of the Tamil language for high school credit. And also Tamil language and its literature have been taught at the University of California Berkeley for over 40 years. With that, we conclude our speech with one of the famous quotes from Tamil literature, "Yadum ure, yavaram kelir." It means, "All places in universe is our place, and all citizens in universe are our friends." Once again, on behalf of Sacramento Tamil Mandrum and Tamil community of City of Folsom, we'd like to thank mayor, vice mayor, council members, and all staff in the city for declaring the month of January as Tamil Heritage Month. Welcome, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. We're going to call the second item, and then I think we wanted to take a group photo of everybody after this next one.
Your second scheduled presentation this evening is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month in the City of Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. I know I came early because I was born just next to the Tamil state border.
Oh, fantastic.
So I totally understand what they were saying, but sometimes I struggle too. So I want to be part of that. That's why I came down. Thank you. Well, I'm going to present the Sikh community, please. Members of the Sikh community, could you please, you know, join us? Mr. Kulvinder Singh. Thank you, sir.
Let's raise this a little bit.
Raise this, okay. I got to know my offices, right? Okay. And I can make this. I would like you to, you know, hold this proclamation. I think while I was coming fast, I think I forgot my glasses.
Oh, no.
Now I know the challenge. Once again, thank you so much, Kulvinder, and the community members for being here. The proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom for claiming Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in the City of Folsom. Whereas Sikhs first arrived in the United States more than 125 years ago. I didn't know that. I learned this. And Sikhs work in many...
We can hear you better if you pick up the mic.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Elaine. Now I got to move my mask down. Sikhs work in many capacities, including on farms, in lumber mills, and for the Western Pacific and Pacific Eastern railroads, on the Pacific coast, and on the Panama Canal. Wow. Whereas Sikhs are the fifth-largest religious group by number with more than 25 million around the world. An estimated 500 Americans of the Sikhs originated on more than a third...
500,000.
500,000, I'm sorry. That's a big number. Originated on more than a third of the nation's Sikh population resides in California. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walk of the life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including services as members of the United States of Armed Forces, they have made and continue to make significant contributions to our great nation in public services, in agriculture, medicine, trucking, science, and technology, and distinguish themselves by fostering great respect among people through faith and service. And whereas the month of November is significant for the Sikh celebrations of Diwali, the birth of the first guru, a founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanakji, in 1469, and installation of the Sikh scriptures as the final and eternal guru in 1708. And whereas the City of Folsom seeks to further on diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunities to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experience of Sikh Americans. Now, therefore, on behalf of Michael Kozlowski, our mayor, myself, Y.K. Chalmchala, and our city council members, do hereby proclaim the November 2021 as the Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Proclaim this on 14th day of December 2021. Thank you all for your great service. And we have a huge Indian-American Sikh community in Folsom and around the areas. Thank you for all your contributions. Mr. Kulvinder, would you like to say some words or others?
And everybody see me? I believe their camera is somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, mayor, council, audience, and viewers on Zoom and the Internet. My name's Kulvinder Singh. I'm going to show you how Diwali, Hanukkah, and even a Christmas tree are all related Diwali is a multi, many thousands of years-old celebration. It involves, you know, lighting candles. So we have a clay pot that it's put in. I was at an Episcopal church on Saturday evening, and they had apples, and they put a candle in those, and they had a main candle that they started the light from, which reminded me of Hanukkah because that was only 10 days ago. And you have a main candle, and then you have the other eight candles. Let me tell you about Diwali and the Sikh celebrations for Diwali. We had a series of gurus. We had a guru, the third guru, who became guru when he was a senior citizen in his 70s. He held a big gathering. This was in the 1500s, early 1500s, on Diwali. In 1577, a cornerstone was laid for what is now called the Golden Temple, that complex in Amritsar. And that was laid by a Sufi saint. His name is Mia Mir. We're going to come back to him. In 1619, that's a year before Jamestown, the sixth guru, who was born 1595 or so, so he was in his mid-20s, he was invited to a fort, an area outside Amritsar, because the king or the emperor's people had said, "A holy man is needed." Some astrologers said, "A holy man's prayers are needed," because the emperor was not feeling well. Guru Hargobind, the sixth guru, he came, he prayed, and then he found out he was in a prison. He was not free to leave. Mia Mir, who I mentioned earlier, he intervened. He told the emperor's people, "Okay, you were ill. The guru came. You're well now. You can't hold him. He didn't do anything to you." In the time the guru was there, he found out that some of those other prisoners were also political prisoners. Most of them were nobles, prominent people in the Hindu community. There were 52 of them. So the order came down. The guru is free to leave. The guru, through his people, told the emperor's people, "Only if I can take everybody here." The next order that came from the emperor was, "As many people as can hold tassels on the tail of your..." This a tunic, a robe? We call it a kurta. May leave with you. The guru had an excellent tailor. He made a tunic with 52 tassels. He had an even better lawyer, Mia Mir, okay? The guru walked out of the prison with all of the 52 prisoners. He walked and traveled back to Amritsar, that holy city, and the city was lit up because it was the first day of Diwali. That is the reason we have a day of Thanksgiving, of liberation, truth over falsehood, light over dark, however you want to understand it. And I would also mention a couple of the things happened in November, and we'll come back for next November proclamation. Our Maharaja, he came in the early 1800s. He put the gold on the Golden Temple. So he was born in mid-November. I was born in mid-November, okay? And we have this enormous congregation, everybody from Folsom to everywhere else comes up to Yuba City to celebrate on the first Sunday of November every year, the celebration of the holy scriptures. And I want to invite everyone to come and join us next year. I'm going to introduce Peram Jit Singh Kara, who's going to say a few words.
All right, I will keep it very short. Thank you. Good evening, respected mayor, city council members, city manager and staff, and all the attendants here. My name is Peram Jit Singh Kara. I live this beautiful city, Folsom, last 22 years, and I'm loving it. As you all know, Folsom is a very diverse city. Many Sikhs have been living here for over 35 years. We Sikhs love this city, and we see like this is our home. Our first guru, Guru Nanak Devji, said, "Kirt Karo Nam Jappo Wand Ke Shaku," which means, "Work hard, pray to God, and share with others." Sikhs have served in Folsom community for several years and will continue to do so in the future. An example of our service is holding a food drive last year during COVID for Folsom Food Bank, and also serve all the time in all our temples, basically every day. We look forward to giving back to Folsom community in the future and being involved in more activity in these coming years. Also, please let us know if there is any program comes up, like, you know, we feed the hungers or any another, you know, help the homeless. Our community, Sikh community, always be open to help. This evening, thank you to the city council for recognizing the Sikh community in Folsom today. Thank you to all, and thank you very much. Good night.
We'll take one group picture, Mayor. You want to join us, please?
Yeah.
Mayor, would you like to say a few words before I start?
We need the word Folsom behind us. So, Yike? Mayor? Mayor, I did nothing. It was your proclamation. You signed it. And we're going to say, "Diwali," right? Diwali. Now everybody knows why Diwali is important for us, right? And thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome.
For inviting you and making the time.
Thank you very much. There you go. Good stuff.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
How are you? Congratulations, and thank you all very much. time afterwards, so.
All right, your next item this evening is item number three. This is a presentation by PG&E on PG&E's overhead transmission lines vegetation management and tree removal project.
Sounds good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name's Joe Wilson. I'm the regional vice president for PG&E. I have the privilege of being able to serve the community of Folsom. I'm joined today by John Costa, who is the senior manager of our local government affairs group, again, serving the community of Folsom, as well as Kevin Butteau, who is the director of vegetation management for our transmission system. So tonight, we're going to present a plan that was developed in collaboration with the city that really balances the needs of the utility to maintain compliance and reduce risk with the needs and desires that were clearly expressed by the city council and members of the community to protect the parkway. So I would like to apologize for the less-than collaborative approach that we started off with, but I think that we were able to course correct and come to a plan that really does balance both of those things or both of those needs. I'd like to thank Bruce Klein, Robert Goss, the city manager, the city arborist, for going out onsite to the parkway to really clearly express to us their concerns and what they saw as really why it means so much to the city. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to John Costa, who's going to start off with talking about how we have come to a collaborative agreement, what our work plan looks like, and then we will invite Kevin Butteau up to talk about some of the specific compliance requirements. John?
Thank you. Again, good evening, Mayor, council members. John Costa. So tonight's presentation will be in three parts. One, kind of the macro level, what PG&E does with vegetation management throughout our service territory. Then we'll talk a little bit about the transition, transmission corridor, what we call wire zone, border zone. I'll turn it over to Kevin to talk about the regulations that we have to work within, and then the focus of Folsom, so the work we've got proposed for the city for discussion. So first, PG&E takes steps every day to ensure safety, the safety and reliability of our electric system, which serves nearly 16 million people in Northern and Central California. This work includes working with our customers and communities, and I'll say this again, working with our customers and communities, similar to what Mr. Wilson just described, an opportunity to come to you and talk about the work, propose what we're doing, get your feedback, and hopefully build a better process as we move forward. But this is important for us to manage the trees and other vegetation that is located near our power lines that could cause wildfires and could impact the safe, reliable delivery of electricity to our customers. So overall, the program of edge management in California, we inspect approximately 100,000 miles of overhead power lines each year. We then prune and/or remove more than a million trees annually. We also address dead and dying trees, so trees impacted by drought and bark beetle. So the transmission right-of-way vegetation zones, which we call the wire zone, border zone, this is a depiction, depiction of what we are trying to accomplish throughout our service territory. And I know this, this looks pretty, and some of your residents, our customers, may feel like this is not what this is going to look like when we're done. But we take great lengths to address the vegetation.
John, can you tell us what those dimensions are in the wire zone, the border zone, and the hotter zone?
That is a great question. I don't know offhand, Kevin. Depends on our easements within these particular zones.
Yeah, that's, that's very dependent on what equipment is in, the tower is. The different voltages have different sized towers, so it's different widths. It could be anywhere. The wire zone could be, if the wires are 20 feet across, it's 30 feet. If the wires are 60 feet across, it's 80 feet, something to that respect where you have.
I respectfully suggest that in the future, you add some notes to this, to this drawing so that that's a little bit more evident. Because it could, it appears to be completely up to whatever PG&E says it is. If there's, if there's definitions on that, it should be on here.
Understood. Yeah, thank you. Great highlight. So again, what we want to do is try to be more transparent about the work, so clearly adding some information, more information to this slide. This is merely for depiction purposes. Before I turn it over to Kevin, though, I want to talk a little bit about kind of the environment we find ourselves in. So about seven years ago, the CPC and CAL FIRE have developed these fire risk maps, which is a tier two, tier three. Those represent elevated or extreme fire risk. Currently, the city of Folsom does not sit with any of those tiers, but just east of you, Eldorado County, they do. Seven years ago, 15% of the infrastructure of PG&E was in what we were considering a tier two, tier three fire risk. Today, 52% of our infrastructure resides in a tier two, tier three. So now, the only thing that's changed, our infrastructure has not moved, but what has changed is the environment around our infrastructure. That's why we are focused on addressing the issues of vegetation, both trees and brush within our right-of-way underneath and close to our infrastructure. We want to ensure safety of not just delivering of that power, but safety to the communities we serve. So I think as we move forward through this process, and Kevin comes forward to talk about the project itself, and as we talk about how to best partner as we continue into 2022 and further, it's important to note that the, the climate around our infrastructure is constantly changing. Our approach will need to change to address that environment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin to talk a little bit about the regulatory environment, and then more specific to the city of Folsom.
Good evening. I'd like to talk to you specifically about the middle section of this slide, as we are not here to discuss any dead trees on this patrol. PG&E's vegetation management program around our electric transmission grid is specifically geared towards maintaining compliance with North American Electric Reliability Council or Corporations, FAC 003-4. It is a zero-tolerance policy put in place by the federal government for transmission owners and operators to maintain compliance, specific compliance at all times, depending on the voltage of the line that is present. And in conjunction with that, PG&E also works off ANZI A300 Part VII, which requires establishing compatible vegetation with the transmission lines. And so when we walked out in the field, or before we walked out in the field as a, as a city manager, mayor, and PG&E group, PG&E had identified in the neighborhood of 265 vegetation points. Now, those could be anything from small brush or large trees, depending on what it, what we were doing. And we were trying to implement four separate programs in this right-of-way at one time to do at one time for cost efficiency. Obviously, that did not sit well with the community with what we were doing. So we worked collaboratively with the city arborist, with the mayor, with the city manager, and we brought that total down to 50 trees that require work in the city this year to maintain compliance for this cycle. We really appreciate the effort that you put forth to, to work with us and have some patience with us so we could come to meet what you're looking for as a community. And we really look forward to moving forward in the future to continue the remaining work that we are going to have to do. But at this point in time, we are going to work these 50 trees. There is 14 trims and 36 removals. Of those removals, eight are oak trees. Obviously, the community is very concerned about oak trees, but just so everybody has a little more comfort with that, five of those oak trees are no farther across than your finger, so three inches or less in diameter. The other three oak trees are hazardous trees that would potentially pose a hazard to the community, or they're not in an area where the community is going to be at, and they require, would end up requiring extensive pruning to maintain them, and it would not be the best idea for the tree, for us to kill it. And so we're trying not to do that for the community. The remaining 36 tree, or the remaining 28 trees that we are removing are non-natives, predominantly non-natives and invasive species. And so that they would, we're best suited to remove that from the city's inventory of trees at this point in time. Additionally, we have agreed to provide replacement trees for the city and a tree bank, much like what we did with the gas vegetation management program years ago. And we are just going to add to that and, and move on, you know, move on, move those funds to you so you can place trees where you'd like to have them. John?
Thank you, Kevin. So kind of where do we stand today? So as Kevin educated, 14 trees we're proposing to prune, 36 we're proposing to remove, eight of those are oak trees that we worked with the, the city staff, more particularly your arborist. So what the customers can expect over the next several weeks, we have a compliance date of end of the month. We will have four crews in the city addressing the work as it stands today. And as we move forward, so that is as it stands today, so we have a compliance date of the 31st, we've got the holidays, we'll have several crews... of the 31st, we've got the holidays, we'll have several crews in the field addressing these issues, and we'll move, we'll move forward, staff on a joint press release talking about the great work that we've been able to come together with the city on. The work will begin starting tomorrow. Again, we have a compliance date end of the month. And then as we move into 2022, so we've had some fits and starts on this project, we will continue to have maintenance of these lines for the life of this, these lines. So we need to ensure that we're communicating early and often with your staff. So as we move into 2022, we'll make sure we bring forth what the workload looks like. We will communicate early and often with your staff, and then we'll walk the project to let them know what we've identified, what we're addressing, and get your feedback from staff as we move forward. And with that, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very, very much. I, you know, just about a month ago, we had a false start with you guys visiting us, and apparently every time we invite you, we get a terrible storm the day before, or two days before. So you guys were cleaning up then, and I'm sure doing some cleanup now. I, I have to say, from where we were at that point to today, we've come a million miles in terms of having a great open dialogue between the utility and, and the city staff, and really finding ways to comply appropriately and maintain safety, but really understand the, you know, the, the, the identity that the community draws from its vegetation. So I'm, I'm really pleased with this outcome. We are going to lose a few trees, but it is dramatically different than what the initial plan was, or what a more clear-cutting kind of strategy would have entailed. So I'm, I'm really excited about this. I don't have any questions myself, because I've been very close to it, but I will ask if any of the other council members do, and then we have a member of the public that would like to comment.
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to, you know, pass the same comments what our mayor is passing. I think you guys were hearing at the beginning, Hinkle Creek Nature Center, and our Folsom logo is also distinctive by nature. Thank you so much for working with us and saving all those trees. We are okay to take out those, you know, non-native species kind of thing, and thank you.
Ms. Ari, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to relay that I am grateful for the partnership that has been made between PG&E and the city of Folsom, and also, you know, big, thank you to Bruce and Robert and Claudia and Julie for their hard work in getting this information out to the public, but I am grateful for where we are today. Thank you.
Questions?
Just, um, thank you guys for backing off on what started as a very, very acrimonious situation, and I am the person who made the phone call the morning after the, the last council meeting that you guys didn't show up for, because I live a block from this. So I, I called Elaine screaming, "Get out there right now!" So that was when Elaine appeared immediately. I think she was actually halfway out of the parking lot by the time I passed her on Natoma Street. So thank you guys for working it out, and thank you, John. You know how important all of this stuff is to the, to the city of Folsom. We've, not, not in my tenure on this council, which is a very long time, do I recall there ever being this bad of a situation between the city and PG&E? We've always been very cooperative whenever you guys had to do work on gas lines in town, installing pig stations, all of the work that you guys have done, and it almost seemed like because you don't supply electricity in the city of Folsom that, you know, it was kind of a pass-through, and we weren't going to see what was going on. So thank you guys for backing off and making some, some, what we believe to be reasonable concessions, and thank you, John, for getting involved.
Thank you.
I'll just be quick, I think this is a win-win, win for PG&E, a win for the city of Folsom, and I'll just echo thanks to PG&E, to our city staff, and to the residents who are our eyes and ears out there. Thank you all.
Yeah, you guys definitely get a lot of attention for the wrong reasons. This is a, this is a day to celebrate some really good collaboration, so.
Thank you. If I may, before you open public comment.
Certainly, yeah.
So thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to address these issues. And, you know, I want to point out, Mr. Wilson, he spoke earlier, as our regional vice president, the company is taking a different approach to how we work with our communities. And quite frankly, it's working with our communities, identifying opportunities. We won't always be there, right? We, we have to address the issues that relates to our system, but I think Mr. Wilson and others will, will say, you know, trees are infrastructure too. So while we are focused on our infrastructure and the interaction of vegetation and infrastructure, we need to realize that not every jurisdiction could be a one-size-fits-all, right? So we do have to review the infrastructure as trees as well, so the green infrastructure, and, and Joe is here to make sure we show up in our hometowns as partners versus, you know, maybe the corporation itself. So I'll be here moving forward along with my team, so please at any time reach out if you have any concerns or questions, and we'll try to address them as best we can.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we don't generally have public comment on presentation items, but we do have somebody who would like to speak on this one, and we're going to do that.
Yeah, you have a request to speak from Bruce Klein.
And if anybody else would like to put in a blue card, you're welcome to. Gotcha. And, and as usual, the three month, the three-minute limit is in, is operative here, so Bruce, I'm counting on you to be succinct.
Not sure if that's possible. We'll try.
Well, hey, I can ask, right?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council staff, thank you for the opportunity to present. Thank you very much, PG&E, for coming tonight. As we all expressed, on October 26th, we really wanted PG&E to be here, to hear us, and to hear from the residents about the importance of these trees. I can't thank the council enough for taking the action to put this on the city council agenda on October 26th. And by the way, should be remiss, Bruce Klein, 30-year resident of Folsom, here with my wife Julie, also a 30-year resident of the city of Folsom. Robert Goss couldn't be here tonight. But tonight, or today, I had an opportunity to walk the corridor again and just marvel at the beauty of those trees, and then I had another opportunity this evening to walk with Mr. Wilson and Mr. Costa. That was a very pleasant and very nice opportunity to have PG&E walk and look at those trees. I know they've been out there, but Joe had not been to be able to see it. And these are a very, very special, special part of the city of Folsom. We value our trees in the city of Folsom, and nothing became more evident than when they were threatened, and how many people rose up and, and expressed their views about protecting our city trees. Brian Willis, Brian Wallace, a revered artist in our town, also a member of our Parks and Recreation Committee, did this wonderful piece of art to preserve our trees, just because he knew that this was an important issue, and put this beautiful art piece out there. So I spoke on October 26th about a win-win, just like Vice Mayor Aquino just mentioned, and this should be a very simple thing, a very simple win-win. And we were all very, very frustrated with PG&E for not stepping up and, and to do really what we felt was a simple thing and what they should be doing to protect our trees. And they did, and thank, and I'll, and I'll talk just a little bit about that in a moment. But again, this is a very beautiful corridor, and I can't imagine what that corridor would be like here on December 14th if they were going to do to the corridor what they had planned to do before. We have learned some lessons, and whenever we have challenges through things like this, we always have opportunities to learn and grow from those, and there are a whole bunch of them that we can learn to grow on. First, we all know, and we learned firsthand how much our residents value these trees. We have it as distinctive by nature, but when, when it comes to threats to our trees, people really want to step up and will step up. The second piece is that our residents want to be informed about what's happening on city property. We own that corridor, and we want to know if there are threats to those trees. And I think on a go-forward basis, we need to have much more robust communication, and tying that into the communication that PG&E has committed to do with the city in 2022 and thereon. I did hear a number of times, you know, presently, 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 I want to make sure that on a go-forward basis, we all have a real clear understanding of how we are going to work together on these trees, and all trees within the city of Folsom that may be potentially threatened. As people come and go, you know, institutional memory is lost. Look at Mr. Goss's email that he sent to all of you, very, very, very well-written, about, you know, getting things into writing, or having a memorandum of understanding, or a letter of agreement, about how we're going to progress in the future, because people do forget, or things change. And so there's other things that we can do for the trees, and I'll talk about that. Lastly, I just want to, a couple thank yous. Again, thank you to the council for stepping up. You did so in an admirable way, and I really, really appreciate it. Your residents really appreciate it. We, we all saw what occurred, providing the direction to the staff. And then Elaine, and the city arborist, I know battled a lot on protecting these trees, and that does not go unnoticed. And sometimes it takes more than just city staff talking. Sometimes it takes residents, and who the residents know in our community, and what experiences they have to rely on, and rely on this, and the city council to provide their backup to the staff to say, this is what we want to occur. Lastly, to PG&E, it's not easy for anyone to say, you know what, what we did and our approach was not the right approach. I mean, that takes a lot of guts. It takes a lot of inward thinking about how to pursue and be an active member of the community. And the city of Folsom has always had a very good relationship with our development partners. I mentioned to John Costa, John and I, when I was a city attorney here, we were at many, many meetings where we didn't agree on things all the time. But one thing that stands out in the city of Folsom always is that regardless of the issue, we will come together, we'll be direct, we'll be candid, and we'll work for the best interest of the city of Folsom. And we may not agree, or we may not come to all complete agreement at the end of it, but we will engage. And that's what the residents do, that's what we expect. And so I can't thank PG&E enough for stepping up and saying, you know what, we didn't do the right thing in this case, and we're going to make it right by looking at a different approach and go on a go-forward basis, we're going to have a different approach. So with that, I want to say thank you very much. Can't thank you enough.
Excellent, thank you.
Our next speaker on this item is Sharon Kendall.
Good evening again. So my name is Sharon Kendall. Today, December 14th, I would like to thank you for speaking up for our beautiful and irreplaceable Valley Oak Trees from the PG&E Clear Cutting Plan. You gave nature a voice. I want to thank you for listening to the concern of the Folsom citizens and achieving a successful conclusion. I want to thank the Folsom volunteers who also contributed to an important victory. Bruce Klein, Robert Goss, and those that were willing to lie down underneath the trees to protect them. Thank you for the police department for providing law enforcement if needed, and I believe that this is a textbook case of teamwork, and I am proud of all of you who contributed. Thank you for PG&E for coming this evening and working together with Folsom to a positive outcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, before we move on, I just wanted to ask if there's any callers on the line who wanted to speak on this item? Hearing none? We'll move on.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming this evening, and for everybody for their hard work in getting this resolution together. All right, fantastic. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. And I think we're going to pull number 17 for discussion. Council members, is there any other items you'd like to discuss?
If there's nothing else that anybody wants to pull, I'm happy to move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar absent item 17.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, would you call 17, please?
So item 17 is Resolution Number 10761, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a design and consulting services contract with TJKM for the Folsom Lake Crossing and East Natoma Street Safety Improvements Project and Appropriation of Funds. You have three requests to speak on this item. First will be Rebecca Bolan, who will be followed by Gary Bolan.
Thank you. Resolution 10761 contains two items of concern, a barrier on East Natoma between Folsom Lake Crossing and Genada Way, and another proposed traffic study of Genada. A barrier on East Natoma between Folsom Lake Crossing and Genada by itself will create additional hazardous conditions, in our opinion, by obstructing sightlines at Genada. An October 2020 study found that sightlines at Genada are adequate for speeds of only 47 miles per hour. June 2021, speed data found the prevailing speed on East Natoma is now 55 miles an hour. 25% of traffic exceeds 65 miles an hour, with 80 plus mile an hour per speed, speeds recorded. Obviously, this exceeds the sightline threshold of 47 miles an hour. A barrier without a signal at Genada could further denigrate the sightlines. For example, at nighttime, headlights of approaching traffic could be hidden behind the median barrier. The traffic study contained in this resolution is laser-focused on one criteria in order to justify a signal, traffic counts at Genada. This has already been done, and doing it again is a waste of money. This study could instead focus on slowing traffic on East Natoma with signal technology. The focus needs to be on the real issue of excessive speeds on East Natoma. Traffic signals have been used to reduce speed and increase, increase safety in the past. Six signals were installed on Empire Ranch Road to slow speeding. July 1st, 2019, press release states, quote, "The signals are installed to further increase motorist, pedestrian, and cycle safety on Empire Ranch Road, and will help slow down speeding drivers." Concerning these signals, Mr. Rackavan is quoted as saying, quote, "We've had a significant speeding problem on Empire Ranch, with cars driving in excess of 55 miles per hour on a 45 mile per hour road," unquote. This is the perspective that city traffic management should be taking when evaluating improvements and a signal on East Natoma. This isn't just a Genada or an Elvies Lane issue, or a safety problem. It's an East Natoma, Folsom-wide, regional-wide safety problem. The traffic needs to be calmed and speeds reduced. The only way to do this is with a signal, and the only place to put a signal on this roadway segment is Genada. On December 2nd, the Traffic Safety Committee voted six to one to recommend to the council that, one, a signal be installed at Genada, and, two, a median barrier in conjunction with the signal be installed. The Folsom Police Department, the Fire Department, three citizen representatives, and the school district representative, all supported this measure. The Traffic Safety Committee was recorded, and I would ask you to view or listen to this meeting, as well as to review the June 2021 speed data. The Traffic Safety Committee's decision took place after this resolution was placed on your agenda. Please ensure that the Genada study focuses on slowing traffic on East Natoma and not traffic counts at Genada. And keeping with the Traffic Safety Committee recommendations, ensure the median barrier between Folsom Lake Crossing and Genada be designed and installed only in conjunction with a signal at Genada. Thank you.
I, I just want to make a comment, this is a general comment. I don't know what Mr. Rackavan did or did not say, but I don't want you to walk away from here believing that the lights on Empire Ranch Road were installed to control speeding. They were not. They were planned when that subdivision was, was under development.
Well, I was.
Those, those, I, I, again, I, I can't speak to what he did or did not say, or what you did or did not hear, but I'm just telling you that that is not why those signals were installed.
Well, what I took was from the press release that was.
I don't, again, I don't care, but having been here when I was on the, the planning commission, I believe, when Empire Ranch was being, was being planned initially, all of those signals were planned all along. The only question was when, what the timing was going to be for them to be installed.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I was just, again, referencing the press release that went out at the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, your next speaker will be Gary Bolan, who will be followed by Jerry Burnell.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are residents of Folsom for 33 years, since 1988. This is in reference to Resolution Number 10761. As previously mentioned, on December 2nd, the Traffic Safety Committee voted six to one to install a traffic light at Genada to tap down and slow down traffic and a median to tap down and slow down traffic and a median to keep the traffic in their own lanes. These two solutions work together. At the December 2nd meeting, Sergeant Bade of the Folsom Traffic Department summed up correctly that these are two separate and connected safety issues. The primary issue is the persistent speeding of east and west traffic on East Natoma, 34,000 cars a day. The second issue is the unregulated traffic coming out, coming in and out of Gianada presenting hazardous conditions for the high volume and high speed on East Natoma traffic flow. The police department has implemented traditional methods for mitigating speeding on East Natoma, but the effectiveness was only temporary. The Folsom Police Department has stated that an engineering solution for speed calming and safety is required on East Natoma, and the engineered solution is a traffic light at Gianada. A median barrier cannot stand alone as a safety remedy to reduce speeding on East Natoma. It needs to be part of a complete solution to reduce speed, which includes a traffic signal at Gianada. The June 2021 traffic data, again, 50% of vehicles exceeded the 45 mile per hour speed limit. The prevailing speed, 55, and 25% of the vehicles were going 65 miles per hour or more. Prior studies found that the speeds over 47 miles per hour do not provide adequate sight distances for vehicles exiting Gianada. By itself, a median barrier will further decrease and obstruct the sightlines, making turning movements at Gianada even more dangerous. Another traffic study on Gianada is not needed. Both the traffic light on Gianada and median barrier have to be designed and installed together to control speed and safety of the over 34,000 vehicles that travel daily over East Natoma. In Resolution 10761, please ensure that a barrier will be designed and installed along with a signal. Thank you.
Okay, it's probably important to clarify something here because you've entangled the two pieces of traffic control that you're discussing. This particular resolution is for design services for the median barrier, okay? And it neither, and we are, on the table right now is not a preclusion of there being a signal or an approval of there being a signal. That will have to be discussed separately. The reason that this one is on the agenda, and Mark, I'm going to let you correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have some grant funding that we qualified for, for improvements in that area. And in order to maintain that grant, we have to have the design services underway this year. So that's why this is on our agenda right now, is to start the design services. Is that a fair summary of what we discussed previously?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so we are not precluding there being a signal, but we're not approving one tonight. That's not the motion that's on the table or the item that's on the table.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Jerry Burnell.
Good evening, sir. Mayor, members of the council. Also like to speak on the resolution. I am very pleased to see the grant funding and I'm very pleased to see the median barrier as it relates to Folsom Lake Crossing and East Natoma. Clearly, we've had fatal accidents on that stretch. We've had near fatal accidents on that stretch. The speeds are in excess of 20 miles per hour for a quarter of the traffic. Think about that, a quarter of the traffic is 20 miles an hour of a speed limit on that section right now. And so when you do have crashes without a barrier, you have a loss of life rather than serious injuries. So very much appreciate this moving forward from a staff standpoint. I will have to say, though, that I absolutely agree with my homeowners in Locklina, and that is, as you move around the corner, that median will impact or has a strong potential of impacting the sight distances for those vehicles coming off of Folsom Lake Crossing going eastbound, for those turning out of Gianada. And as been expressed tonight, there's a 47 mile per hour sight distance, which makes sense. We're way over that on that street section right now. The second part of that is, again, another study on Gianada's light. And there isn't a way that a dumb light, I will say, a light that's triggered by cars pulling up to it, is going to do anything to slow traffic on East Natoma except every time a car pulls out. Smart light technology, whether it's used on Empire Ranch or other cities or places throughout the country, ties together two or three different lights, like Briggs Ranch and Gianada and East Natoma, and can bring traffic speeds down. And that's really the problem. I mean, the problem out there is we have excessive speed. The police does a marvelous job when their traffic officers are out there ticketing, and the next day, the speeds are back up again. So the fundamental problem is, how do we get the speeds down? And right now, we don't have a solution that's on the table for moving the speeds down. We're not dealing with the fundamental problem. We're dealing with how do we reduce the injury from those excessive speeds when we have accidents? And so I would ask that maybe we modify the second portion as it relates to the Gianada light to relook at it rather than just a warrant basis on, you know, the cars coming down Elvies Lane or Gianada that could benefit from a light. But really, how can that light, in conjunction with two other lights, East Natoma Crossing, Briggs Ranch, begin to slow the traffic down? Because that's a fundamental problem. This is the second highest roadway in the city where you have excessive speed. And you got a lot of accidents out there, especially at the crossing. So I would just ask that maybe you amend the study on the Gianada light and that the sightlines are really analyzed. Just to go back to the one issue on the comment, Carrie, I think, on the slowing on Empire Ranch Road. That was, Becky's comment was correct. It's a PSA that's on your website currently, and KCRA did a news show about it. And it talks about, you know, trying to get from 65.
Again, Jerry, I don't care what KCRA said. My only point was, the suggestion was made that those lights were installed to slow down traffic. You were here at those meetings when that project got approved, and those lights were planned all along. It was just a question of when they were going to get installed.
My only thought would be that you might want to pull that PSA down because it's on your website today. And that's exactly the quote. It was, how do we slow speeds down? And we've got that issue out there. And the medians are great.
Okay, well, you know what a geek I am, so.
No, I know, I know. I'll show you the stuff. And you are. You got a memory like an elephant. And you are a traffic person and have been for years. And there's a challenge out there that we're not dealing with. But this is a good start in reducing injuries.
All right. Speaking of which, Mark, can I ask you a question? Since this has come up a couple of times already? Actually, this would be three times. I suspect that the numbers that are being quoted, about 25% of the traffic exceeding the speed limit, could not possibly be accurate. Otherwise, that roadway would be posted for 55.
That's my understanding as well. Mr. Bosch unfortunately couldn't be with us this evening, but he did ask that I clarify that that is not an accurate statement, that, you know, 25% of the traffic is exceeding 65. It's actually around 2% is exceeding 65.
Okay, so we need to get the correct data and we need to get that clarified. Because, again, now this is something that has been said in a public meeting, and if it's completely inaccurate, you know, there's two problems. One is that if that were actually an accurate number, we'd have already had to post that at the 85th percentile, which would have been something significantly in excess of 45. So we need to clarify that, and then we need to clarify what the right number really is.
Yeah, if I could make the point that we do have a valid radar speed survey for 45 miles per hour on East Natoma Street in the vicinity of this intersection. The distinction between this situation and Empire Ranch Road was, as you recall, as you pointed out, at the time, there were no traffic signals on a over-two-mile stretch of Empire Ranch Road. The speeds were so high out there, we could not even get a valid radar survey. Thus, we did advance the construction of the signals that were already in the plan. There were, I should correct you, there were a couple of signals that were not in the original Empire Ranch master plan that we added in an effort to create a network of signals. And then we set them in what was called Rest-in-Red configuration, which was, again, an effort to help us to achieve an enforceable radar survey. It was successful. We, after instituting the signal plan and the Rest-in-Red timing, we were able to achieve and validate our survey and then restore those signals to normal operation. So it was a very different situation than what we're dealing with out here at East Natoma Street. And again, there's been reference to this H-SIP grant, which was driven by the local road safety plan that we conducted two years ago. We had TJKM perform a citywide assessment of all fatal and severe injury collisions. This segment of East Natoma Street, specifically the curve heading up towards the traffic signal and, of course, the curved section of Folsom Lake Crossing, was identified as an issue in a local road safety plan. That plan also identified the appropriate engineering corrective measures, which was the installation of a median barrier and some additional delineation to call attention to the curve and try to slow traffic down. That led to us funding or submitting the grant application to the H-SIP program. And I would note that both the local road safety plan was brought to this council and approved, as were the H-SIP grants. So the H-SIP grants is very specifically identifies median barrier and some additional delineation. It does not include funding for a signal. A signal at Gianada is not eligible for the H-SIP grant before you this evening. So as you pointed out, Mayor, correctly, that while there is a connection between the two because they're on the same stretch of road, the item before you is to design the median. And there's been several points made about the median could block sight distance or affect sight. It hasn't been designed yet. That's the whole point of the additional study for Gianada, is to ensure that whatever we design to improve safety on the curve
Doesn't add.
does not exacerbate a problem at Gianada.
And would there not be consideration giving to the potential for right-in, right-out?
Yeah, again, those are scenarios that have yet to be determined.
All of that will be included in the design, Mark?
Right, we have several options before us, Councilmember Howell. We can either stop the median short of Gianada and find another solution. We can carry the median through Gianada and turn it into a right-turn-only intersection. Or we could design the median to provide raised, channelized control. And again, and under all scenarios, ensuring that we do not limit the sight distance. So, again, it hasn't been designed. We don't know what the outcome is. We will work with the residents to make sure they are aware of what is being proposed. You know, we can weigh their input. But we are somewhat limited in what we can use this H-SIP funding for. And I would just like to emphasize that point. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mark, the bottom line, though, whatever it is today, it's going to improve, and it's, you know, security-wise or accident. That's what I heard from you. It's going to be better than today with this funding and the action you are taking. I just want to make sure residents hear that.
Yes, sir. You know, that is certainly our expectation. And again, it's driven by a study that was performed by a very qualified traffic consultant. We need to see what the outcome is. We need to see what gets designed, have it get constructed, and then assess it. You know, we are going to include, as I mentioned, there will be additional delineation to highlight the curve. And we're considering adding the friction pavement section around the corner to help people keep their traction as they're coming around the corner. So again, until we have a chance to construct it and assess it, we certainly expect that it will improve safety, but we won't know until it's been built.
That's our goal. I mean, that's why we are trying to invest some money, even though if it is Caltrans money, irrespective, right? So we are investing, and all the people you will be working, experts, are going to be considering that. That's one. And the second one is, is that work is going to be waste down the road. This council may agree for a signal there? Is that a waste of work? We have to revamp everything and put again the new? My understanding is probably not, but I don't want to speak for that.
Well, yes, sir. You know, this has been an ongoing dialogue that me and my staff have had with the residents about that intersection for several years. It actually prompted another independent study of the East Natoma Street corridor that was performed by Kim Lee Horn. That study assessed the intersection and determined that a signal was not warranted. The local road safety plan, again, identified median barrier and delineation as improvements, but did not identify a signal. So we're in a situation here where a signal has not been identified as the proper engineering solution for the situation out there, other than the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee. It is not in our capital improvement program. It is not funded. And, you know, again, given that it doesn't meet warrants, it'd be very difficult for us to justify that through future grant applications. So clearly, there are other steps needed here to try to address the situation. But so far, every analysis that's been done does not support the need for a traffic signal. It does not identify it as the appropriate engineering solution.
Okay, thank you. And I think you are even assuring that you're going to work with the community and Traffic Safety Commission and what they approved, you know, last time. So thank you for, you know, doing that. I think Mayor said nicely. I think this approval is for, we have to do it before December 31st to use the Caltrans funds. That's the main intent, why it is here. It's not that we can push it to January 11th meeting.
Yeah, I would highly encourage and recommend that you take action on this this evening. We do have, we have worked with Caltrans so far to modify our supplemental agreement with them and make them aware that we are moving forward with the design. But this is a step that we need to take to hire the consultant and get the contract underway to allow us to proceed to the next level.
Thank you. So we just want to make sure, you know, the residents are hearing. You know, the work we are going to do is you will be, at least, you know, being notified and included, you know, somewhat, and move forward. The work we are going to do shouldn't be making more, you know, issues for the residents on that side. Otherwise, why do we do that, even in that factor? Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Rosario, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, Carrie, anything else?
I'll move the resolution.
I have a question first. This item that we're considering tonight, Mark, did this go through the Traffic Safety Committee?
Yes, this was part of the local road safety plan that was reviewed and approved by the Traffic Safety Committee. They were aware that this was one of the recommended projects for H-SIP funding.
So it seems like the recent vote by the Traffic Safety Committee would contradict their previous action.
That's my take on it, that, you know, we've had two actions by the Traffic Safety Committee. One was the East Natoma Street Traffic Safety Assessment, which, again, did not support, justify a traffic signal. They voted in favor of that study. And then the local road safety plan, which the Traffic Safety Committee also endorsed before we brought it to you for final adoption. So, yeah, it is something that doesn't really mesh up here. We have two actions that say median, no signal, and then a third action that advises a signal.
Okay. Okay, sorry, go ahead with your motion.
I believe I moved the resolution.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 10761.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. All right, fantastic. Please call the next item.
All right, that takes you to your first public hearing item this evening, which is Resolution Number 10775, a resolution of the City Council setting forth results of protests in connection with utility rate hearing. The hearing is to be conducted pursuant to Prop. 218 and establishing new solid waste rates and fees.
Is there a presentation, or do you just want me to?
No, we do anticipate a presentation.
Because I can just jump ahead if you want.
No, sorry. I'm staring at Marie, and she's saying, didn't you have an introduction to this item? Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski and councilmembers. I'm Mark Rackevan, your Public Works Director. I'm Mark Raffin, your Public Works Director. The item before you this evening is a Proposition 218 mandated public hearing considering any protest received regarding the proposed utility rate increase. The rate increases are due to state mandated SB 1383, which was the Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Strategy. And that will require all residents and businesses to participate in an organic waste recycling, edible food recovery, and a recycled product procurement. This mandate will require additional collection vehicles, containers, staff, and outreach that were not accounted for in the previous rate adjustment and are not funded by the state. At this time, I'll hand the presentation over to Marie McKee, our General Services Manager, and Sarah Isabel Mo, our Recycling Supervisor, who will share with you a brief presentation covering the rate adjustment and the feedback received from the public.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Marie McKee, General Services Manager for the Solid Waste Division. I will try to keep my presentation somewhat brief. I have a lot, lot to cover. As our director mentioned, the rate study was the result of SB 1383. And we have some significant changes to our programs that we will have to implement to become compliant with this law. And so we needed to revisit our rates and do a complete rate study. So just to back up a little bit, we did do a rate study a couple of years ago where we did a thorough analysis and increased rates in 2019. At that time, we needed to do that to support our existing programs. And we knew at that time that SB 1383 was coming. We didn't know what the cost would be. And we had to proceed forward with the rate increase at that time with the knowledge that we would be back before you after the regulations were finalized and we could better predict what the cost would be. So our approach to this most recent rate study was to take the rate model that was developed in 2019, which assigned all expenses and revenues, and update that rate model to start with a base year of fiscal year '21, and then add the expenses that would be incurred to become compliant with SB 1383 as well as any other expenses that we knew would occur within the five-year period. The slide in front of you shows those expenses. Once these were added, what we could see was that it created a significant deficit to the solid waste fund. So in response to that, within the model, we adjust the rates to eliminate that deficit and maintain a positive fund balance throughout the five-year period. So throughout that process, we had a strong focus on community engagement and ensuring that everyone in the community had the opportunity to know what was going on, ask questions, and provide us with feedback. So regardless of how you receive, you prefer to receive information, we wanted to reach you. So we did a lot of electronic media and printed notices and in-person meetings that were above and beyond what is required by law to do a rate increase. And in the spirit of that community engagement, I want to spend the rest of my presentation going over the feedback that we received from the community. So the number one comment that we received from the community was concern over the proposed fee for the collection of household hazardous waste. The community expressed significant concern that if there was a charge for this service, that people would dispose of hazardous materials illegally and create an environmental hazard. In response to this, I went back and looked at the rate study to see what the impact would be of removing this fee. And the fee was a rather small fee and didn't create a significant amount of revenue. It was just a small amount and won't have a major negative impact on our fund balance. So with that in mind, the recommendation that is before you today is to actually pass the proposal without the hazardous waste fee included. And in your staff report, there is a table with and without this fee included to give the option to easily pass it without that, if that was the desire. Another concern expressed by the community, but not nearly to the same level as the household hazardous waste, was in regard to the bulky waste. And there is a proposed fee for that as well. The concern again was illegal dumping, although without the, the same environmental hazards that would occur with hazardous waste. The, the most common suggestion that we got from the community in regard to this fee was to provide one per year for no cost and then only charge for the subsequent second and third pickups. So again, I went back to the rate study to see what the impact would be if we were to make that adjustment to the rate study. And the bulky waste fee is estimated to provide recovery of about 1.5% of just the operating cost, not capital. And that would be if we charged for all of the pickups. But since less than 10% of those pickups are for a second or third, the amount of revenue received by only charging for a second and third pickup would be minimal and probably would be offset by the cost of the administrative work to actually implement that fee. So with that, I did not remove the bulky waste fee from the proposal. It's still in there for all bulky waste pickups. However, if the council were to make a recommendation to remove that, my suggestion would be all or nothing on this one rather than only recovering a very nominal amount by only charging for the second and third. Okay, lots more feedback. So the community also expressed a desire to have smaller can options. There were a couple of different reasons for this suggestion.
It's funny that you chose that picture for smaller cans as the first bullet point.
Isn't it though? Well, it's quite relevant because the smaller the can, the more, the more some may choose to overstuff it, right? But there's two reasons actually that people are asking for that option. One is that there are many communities in Folsom where the homeowners association requires residents to store the cans in their garage. And these communities, just because of the type of community they are, they currently don't have green waste cans. When we start this new program, they're going to have to have a third can. And so that, that real estate in the garage becomes very valuable. And the smaller cans do take up a slightly smaller footprint, although not much. The other reason people would like to see smaller cans is to save costs. There's a perception that if they have a can that's half the size, that the cost would be half as much. That's actually not the case. And then increased enforcement kind of goes hand in hand with some of the issues that would come along with smaller cans. The community actually, to my surprise, a lot of feedback that we got was they want to see more enforcement on our current programs. They're tired of seeing the overfull cans, hence the, the photo. And there's some perception that the rate increase is partially because of overfull cans and that I'm paying more because my neighbor keeps overfilling their can and not getting the right size or the right number of garbage cans. So the first two bullet points, I wanted to share that feedback, but not go into a lot of discussion about them. They're not particularly addressed by the proposal. However, they're definitely good feedback that we can use for future rate considerations as well as operational adjustments. There's also been concern about the impact on low-income customers. And I do acknowledge, of course, the rate increase is more difficult for some than others. This proposal does maintain the current level of subsidy that is provided for income-eligible, low-income residents. It also slightly increases it each time there's a rate increase. The subsidy increases just a little bit to continue to provide a good low-income rate.
And Marie, just a quick question. Is that something that happens automatically?
No, it's something that people would have to apply for. Yeah, and, and prove their income eligibility.
No, no, my question is if somebody's already on a, gets...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so if someone is already receiving a low-income rate, when the new rates are implemented, they would automatically continue to receive that, the comparable low-income rate.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then we also received suggestions to pick up trash every other week, therefore shifting some of the resources that are currently used to pick up trash weekly over to the Weekly Organic Service.
Marie, don't we have a requirement that we have to pick it up weekly?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's exactly what the answer is to that question. The suggestion is absolutely correct. That would save money, that would offset, potentially not even have to do this rate increase. But that's just not the case. The California Code of Regulations requires at least weekly pickup of trash and organic waste. And then...
Thank you for using the word "and organic waste." So they defined the rules and policies when the organic waste was going inside the trash and it's going to smell and we have to pick up every week. So now they are moving out most of the organic smelly stuff, but they still kept the same law.
Yes, they still kept it so that trash has to be removed weekly as well.
Right? Okay, thank you. I just want to make that point clear. Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, and I did review the California Code of Regulations and the definition of rubbish and garbage. And it's all included and all has to be picked up weekly.
Weekly, okay. We'll come to that one. I want to continue, yeah.
And then finally, something that you don't often see with a rate increase is that we got a lot of community members who contacted us to express their support for this because they're really excited to see composting and this resource of the ability to recycle their organic waste and see the environmental benefits of that. So there are those in the community who are really excited about this and think that a rate increase is well worth it to receive those benefits. And then the final feedback, we're back to numbers again. The final feedback that I want to share, because I think it's very important, is that some felt that the information that was distributed was not clear enough and that members of the community may not know on January 1st exactly what is going to happen if this proposal passes. And in response to this, we did another outreach campaign through the e-newsletter and the weekly service reminders as well as social media that very clearly and briefly stated that if this passes as of January 1st, the typical monthly residential bill for garbage will be $46.25. And it directed them to our shortcut URL, the website dedicated specifically to this information, where they could contact me if they wanted to, to express their feedback or ask questions. And we did have community members that did that. So it reached, reached some people. The table that you see on this slide is one that was shared at the community meeting or something very similar to it. So basically, what it's showing is that we already have a rate increase that was approved two years ago. Those rate increases go through July 1st of 2023. So the 45.75 that you see highlighted in blue for July 1st of '23, if I wasn't standing before you today, that increase is already scheduled and approved and would happen. So the total monthly charge that this proposal would change that to would be $56 at that same time period for a net increase of $10.25 for this new program over what was already scheduled. This proposal also extends it for two more years at $2 each year. So the net increase for the new proposal is $14.25 over the five-year period. Some feedback from the community also was that we needed to show more percentages because it's not necessarily apparent to everyone right away, the magnitude of this increase. And that's not something we take lightly or wanted to hide or sugarcoat. So I put it right up here for everyone to see. At the end of the five-year period, the rate would be $60 a month versus the 34.50 that it is right now. That is a 74% increase if you're only looking at those two numbers. The incremental increases are much lower. So the first one is the most significant. That is because we need to front-load these rates and get the money to start the programs for all the initial cost. Then they level out and the increases, the next four increases are much less. And then finally, I know you have seen this chart before. I've updated it, but also wanted to share it for the community to see. And this is just how we compare to others who have already adjusted for food waste, either because they're adjusting, like we are, to prepare for it or because they already are collecting food waste. And so if you see communities in this region that are missing from the chart, it's because they're at a different stage in their rate adjustments than we are. And these are the ones that I was able to find comparative data for because they've already moved forward. But every jurisdiction throughout the state is having to adjust to this law and everyone's at a different stage in the process. So what you're seeing is a comparison of what the rates will be in July of '22 because that is when we are proposing to add the food waste to our organics containers. And the comparative rates are based on what those communities, to the best of what I could find, would have at that same time period. The average is $43, so we are a little higher than others. But one thing that I wanted to point out is that of the communities who have already been doing this long-term, the average is a little higher. And so they already know the true cost of providing this service. It's $47.62 among those that have the asterisk and who have been doing this for a while, as compared to our $49.75. Also, I want to mention that CalRecycle highlighted two of these communities. CalRecycle is our enforcement agency from the state. And they highlighted two of these communities as example communities for how to start this program. Those were Stockton and San Ramon. The city of Stockton, when they implemented this program, increased their rates by 32.6%. San Ramon increased by 29%. In July of '22, without this increase, our rates would be $39.50. We are proposing to go to $49.75, which is a 25% increase, right in line with the other communities that CalRecycle has highlighted as examples. So that concludes my review of the rate study and the community feedback. And I'll take any questions or I can hand it over to our recycling supervisor, Sarah Isabel Mo. And she'll talk a little bit about the program changes that the rates will support.
Marie, before we get to that, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that these are projected increases. And there have been times in the past when we had gone through the process, the Prop 218 notification. And I want to say the last time I remember doing it was, it was for five years and it was, it was quite a number of years ago. And so we did that, but we found that we had overestimated what those costs were going to be. And we actually reduced the rates based on the actual data. And I think in this particular instance, because we still don't know what the final rules and regulations are going to be from the state of California as to how we have to go about implementing this, which is why it doesn't happen until July, that I, I think it's important for people to understand that if we have overestimated the cost of the program, we can back off on those rates. But if we had underestimated them, we could not increase the rates over what had been included in, in the Prop 218 notice.
That's right. Any increase would require a new Prop 218 notice, which is a long and costly process.
Right. But I think what's important for the general public to understand is that if we can find ways to do this at lower cost than what we're currently projecting, that we can reduce those increases or even eliminate them.
Absolutely.
But there was a time about 10 years ago when we actually reduced the solid weight, the solid waste rate. You were not here at the time, but that happened.
I was.
Okay.
It was a significant reduction. It was 2004 and it was right around $4 a month reduction.
Yeah.
And up until 2019, that was the last adjustment. The last increase had actually been 2003, followed by the decrease, and then 2019 for the next increase. And not only did we do that decrease, but also we have gone through the Prop 218 notice, gotten increases approved, and then didn't implement them for the same reason, because we found they weren't needed. So Folsom does have a history of that. And it's always easier to reduce or hold back an increase than it is to try to go and start and do another one. The city of Davis actually advertises their Prop 218 approved notices on their website as maximum possible increase. And I, I think that's a good way to put it because that's exactly what this is. This is the maximum. This isn't set in stone because all of you can choose to adjust it downward at any time.
And I think it's important for people to also understand that from an environmental standpoint, our residents have historically over a very... our residents have historically over a very, very long time span shown that they are paying attention to what's going on environmentally. And that is proven if you look at what has happened when there's been requests to voluntarily reduce water usage and to reduce the amount of, of solid waste that we have to dispose of.
Or protect trees.
Right.
Or build a nature center.
Nature center, yeah.
Okay, I, I just want to preface this one more time for the council. This is an opportunity to ask questions, get clarification, and then we are, we have a very specific thing that we have to go through for the public hearing, which we'll do after we run through. So Sarah, any questions?
Yeah, so Marie, some of the feedback that I've received, you touched on it, but so we, we offer two different size garbage cans. And if you get the smaller garbage can, you get a slight discount on the rate. Do we currently offer two different sized blue cans for recycling and will we offer two different sized green cans? Because you, you mentioned that some neighborhoods, they don't have green cans. Well, part of it, what I've heard like from is it Diamond Glen, I think, the 55-plus community? Their homeowners association contracts, right? They don't do their own front yards. They have a service that comes and does it, so they don't have green waste cans. And so they're going to have to have one now to do this organics recycling, but they don't want the 95-gallon can. They want a 65-gallon can.
So historically, we have not offered those with, with very little exception. We have a number of them ordered. The first set that we've ordered are going to be dedicated to getting our commercial businesses in compliance. However, we're going to continue ordering those and start offering them as part of our regular offering. We don't know what the demand is going to be yet, so we may get more demand than we have supply for right away. But eventually, anybody who wants to go with the smaller can will be able to do that for the green waste. And to answer the question on recycling, we have always offered the smaller recycle can. We don't get a lot of takers on that except for communities where maybe you don't have as many residents in the home and so they don't need as big a can, but most, most people need the larger recycle can. So we don't have a high demand for it, but they're available.
Currently for their blue recycle, we don't offer a discount if you take the smaller can.
That's correct. There's no discount. The only thing the rate is based on and for the base rate is the garbage can.
Got it.
And then recycling and organic collection are included with that.
Okay, got it, okay.
But it's still a good option for some people if they don't need the big can and just to take up the smaller footprint or just if they don't need the space. And then we also find some people who find that those are easier to roll. So some community members that struggle with the larger cans will get the smaller ones just because they're easier for them to move and they can remain independent and not rely on us to have to move them in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions, YK?
Yeah, maybe, you know, a quick one, especially on the third bullet. Impact on low-income customers. Thank you for providing me. It's about 650 customers out of 23,700.
Yeah.
About approximately. I did ask her, you know, what is that number? The reason, you know, I, I did some similar outreach, what you guys have done with your material. It has been a constant, you know, request from the low-income, you know, especially the stable social security. And, and off late, they are asking more, how can city help, especially the the inflation is 6.8% and their social security check did not go up. So I'm not sure whether we have done any small research on our side if we want to help on the third bullet. So just want to put a question out there. Thinking of the 6.8% inflation rate out there.
Yeah, and that would be a decision for the council if any of the subsidized rates
Okay.
would want to be adjusted. I will just make sure that everyone understands that the subsidized rates are a general fund obligation. They cannot be subsidized by charging higher rates to everyone else.
So you're telling us five guys decide, okay, got it. We'll come back to that one. Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, fantastic. All right, I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing for this. So we'll now open the public hearing to give consideration to the proposed utility rate increase for solid waste. Madam Clerk, has notice of this hearing been given in accordance with applicable law?
Yes, as required by Prop 218 and prior resolution of the City Council, notice of this hearing was published once in the Folsom Telegraph on December 2nd, 2021, and notices were mailed to the property owners on October 22nd.
Okay, great. The public hearing is now officially open. We will now receive comments and questions and any protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the city clerk will count written protests that have been received either by hand, delivery, or US mail. Do we have speakers that would like to comment?
You have no written request to speak this evening on this item. Okay, you're welcome to come down and do so, sir.
Just come to the- Excuse me, sir. Can you start over into the microphone so everybody can hear you?
I've been involved with this. I was the guy who dictated the reuse legislation. My friend Arthur Robinson Boone recycled up to 98% when they had the green events in San Francisco. And so this was probably the shorter legislation they ever had. All the laws that apply to recycling now hereby apply to reuse, okay? That's all I had to hear and that's all they put down. So I keep things quite simple because I'm able to stay in the middle of all this stuff all the time. Now, with what I'm doing and what I'm seeing in the community is a great opportunity to employ the people who have been brought off the street and been housed over at the hotel, okay? That's been converted. And thanks to the gentleman who's picked up the storage facility there. Now, my sister has a garden and she eats the food from the garden. It's all organic. Now, I got her to go to the, to the food giveaway places and she's got a pantry that's from here to you and from there to there, and it's full of food that I would not eat. What I eat is very selective. I was just reading a book in the library about how your, in your small intestine coordinates with the food that you eat. You've got 20,000 square feet, the little, the little fingers that stick up in your, so you'll understand, I don't want to get too technical. I was just reading through this book and I ended up reading about 60 pages. It'd been about 15 minutes. Now, what, what is advancing here is the opportunity to take the food that is higher quality. They now have eight different products. At Trader Joe's, for instance, I used to eat and I have all along, 21 seasoning salute. And now they have seven other products, not just everything but the bagel, and there's all these different spices, okay? So now, there's a lot of things that don't agree with a lot of people. You know, you've got peneus and everything else that really attack you. And so with, with the comings and goings of what's going on with your diet, it's changing and you have to compete this year differently next year or else you're not going to be there, okay? Now, they had 47,000 products in Safeway. They went up to 50,000 within a couple of years, about four or five years ago. And so when you have all this change in your diet and all these different mixtures of foods, can you imagine having these eight different, I bought them all. I bought them all twice because somebody stole them from me from the street. And so what we have is a whole opportunity to look at what is in this diet that we're all appreciating. Now, with our bodies evolving, we're going to be able to take and, and make ourselves much, much more in tune people and be able to think on a much higher plane. The people who eat better food are going to have a whole lot better quality of what's coming out. And so the people at the bottom of the food chain need to be the people who are realizing the benefits. Now, if you do a organic garden, like my sister's got in her house, that's the food that they eat. And that's the food he cooks and I cannot believe how good it tastes.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Relative to our decision to change the collection rates for waste here in the city, can you make a point on that? Because we normally allow three minutes. You're there.
The reason it costs a lot of money to collect it is because you have a humongous truck. I was recently in the last few months ago, going through about six weeks of time where I was looking at the cracks in the street from the vehicles and all the, the rubber on the sides of the curbs and all the shopping centers and all, all the streets and all the places where they have, including San Francisco where they've gotten a little bit adulterated with what they have for their organization that does their foods, okay? And there was an article that day when I was there about what was going on with these guys. They're getting upstart. Okay, so you need to be able to look at the whole thing holistically.
Thank you.
All right, so there's top people out there.
You're at your time limit now.
You need to be able to bring in the top people that are out there because the quality of food here is better than most everywhere around.
Thank you very much.
And that needs to be appreciated for the people who are not of means.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chalmers-Chet.
All right.
Have a better day, everybody, and Merry Christmas and Happy Birthday to me the day after.
All right, I don't believe we have any other requests to speak on this item, but I'd like to check and see if there's anybody on the phone who would like to speak. Okay, hearing none.
Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. The clerk is required to count all written protests that have been received.
Mr. Mayor, we received a total of 297 written protests to the proposed increases to solid waste rates and fees. These numbers fall short of the 12,864 needed for a majority protest. Therefore, a majority protest does not exist for the proposed utility rate increase.
Okay, at this time, because a majority protest does not exist, it is appropriate for the City Council to consider the resolution to establish new solid waste utility rates and fees. So I will entertain a motion.
Is this the as-is, like what has been proposed? Is that what we are entertaining?
So you certainly could make a motion that amends some portion of it.
Yeah, so it's open for discussion. I love to-
And we can have further discussion if you like.
May I? Thank you.
For purposes of discussion, I'll move Resolution 10775.
And Mr. Mayor, may I ask which one of the two rate attachments would the council be considering? Attachment 1A or attachment 1B?
A includes the hazardous waste pickup charge and B does not. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so Carrie, would you like to amend your motion to identify which of those?
The one that allows the first one free.
This is, the hazardous waste is either in or out, basically. And then the bulky waste was the question of whether or not to charge for none or all, basically. That one, so, so both proposals have the bulky waste charge in it.
Okay.
One proposal does not have the hazardous waste charge in it and one does.
I think we should include one hazardous waste pickup for no charge.
No, that's not an op-, well, that's not, that's not an option she outlined.
For clarity, is 1A-
Can you just put them back up?
Yeah.
Marie's going to come back up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, that's on page 373 of the staff report.
So one includes everything that was in the initial proposal. The second attachment includes everything except for hazardous materials fee and it's, it doesn't include any charges at all for hazardous materials for residential.
Okay, that one.
Okay.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the the resolution and identify alternative B as the preferred way to go forward.
So question for Councilmember Howell, are you willing to amend that further to not charge for the bulky waste pickups?
For the first one, yes.
Well-
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to the right page.
Marie's point was that fewer than 10% of bulky waste pickups are for a second and third pickup. So just offering one is not, it doesn't really make a difference if you only give one free or you give three free.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the recovery of revenue from charging for the second and third or subsequent ones isn't enough to even cover the cost of administering that part of the program.
Okay. So don't charge for them.
All right, so we, we have a motion then to approve the resolution using alternative attachment B and also setting aside the charges for bulky waste pickup. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And I will second that because that is what I have been advocating for since-
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second, but this is an opportunity to have further discussion also, so.
Yeah, I would like to make, I don't know whether I can make an alternate motion here.
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Thank you. In addition to what my colleagues said, I would like to request my colleagues to give a waiver of $10 surcharge for those low-income people of 650 accounts, which is going to be charging about $6,500 to the debt. By doing that one, at least by knowing the current 6.8 inflation rate and all those things going on, their rate is going to increase if we can give that waiver of $10 surcharge for this year and we can figure out next year. Their rate is going to increase a dollar fifty cents or $2. Otherwise, it's going to increase quite a bit for them. So in their eyes, it is a lot. I would like to request my colleagues, in addition to what they propose, adding them, giving a waiver of first year 2022, a $10 surcharge eliminate for the 650 low-income people.
Okay, Marie, could we, could we get some clarification if you would come up here? The, the people that fall into this category that Councilmember Chalmers-Cherl has identified, what, what is the pro-, what is the relative discount that is done or is it based directly on income and it's kind of sliding?
I have a lot of information on that in my extra slides.
Okay.
So we're going to-
I, I'm not opposed to that suggestion. I just want to understand if it's necessary because we may already have a process that kind of gets there.
And just, and just for clarity, I want to be clear on this. So this resolution is saying zero charge for the bulky waste and zero charge for the hazardous waste. Okay. Got it.
Yeah, Sarah was asking for that. Thank you, yeah.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to dig in here a little bit on the subsidized rates.
Okay.
So if you look at the bottom part of this chart, it shows the dollar amount of the subsidy for the low-income residents.
Oh, okay, so it's a fixed-
It's a fixed dollar amount rather than a percentage. The highlighted percentages over to the right actually show, and I think this kind of drives home the point, that the subsidized rates in many cases go up by a higher percentage than the standard rates. The reason for that is because it's a set dollar amount versus a percentage. If we were to do a percentage, what would happen would be that those rate, the gap over the years would just get bigger and bigger and bigger. So to avoid that gap from changing, it's a set dollar amount and then we just adjust that dollar amount. But as, as was pointed out, adjustments can be made. It is a general fund obligation. So I think it's important to note that even with the current proposal, there's a general fund obligation that is you know, around $126,000 a year.
Gotcha. So the, so the subsidy currently, there's a special one just for mobile homes that's irrespective of income?
It is.
Okay, and then you have a low-income standard rate subsidy of $8 and a mobile home low-income subsidy of $1,250.
Yes.
The, the mobile home subsidy is because for the most part, they don't have lawns. If they have lawn, it's a very, very small one.
Sure.
They're not on normal-sized lots and this has been in place for a really long time.
I, I'm not challenging it. I'm just, I want to make sure I understand the distinctions.
They don't tend to generate a lot of waste. A lot of those, those households are single people. And they're in, they're in communities where whatever landscaping is being done, for the most part, is being done by the community where the, where the, the manufactured home is located. So all, all, all they're looking at is the trash that they generate.
Got it. Okay, so in the context of your suggestion of an amendment, the motion or an alternate motion, the subsidy is at least $8 already. Are you just suggesting changing it to 10?
10, the service charge at the bottom is $10 across the board. That line
Yeah.
that goes across the board, you know, working on that one, not charging that service charge for-
But, but we have to-
I don't know what I did there.
That, that's a surcharge for the new service that we have to provide, the organic waste.
Oh, well, again.
Well, the other way to think about it is instead of taking $8 off, you're proposing we take $18 off.
$18 off.
Okay, I, I wanted to make sure that it was cumulative and not a
I was trying to-
change to what we're doing already of small proportion.
That, and it's going to be around $6,500, you know, on the general fund.
In relative terms, it's a modest amount.
Right.
Okay.
That's my alternate motion in addition to what my colleagues are ma- That's my alternate motion, in addition to what my colleagues are making last on second.
Okay.
You want to maybe take them as two separate?
I guess, first let me ask, Mrs. Howell, would you entertain making a friendly amendment to yours to include this, or would you like to handle it as a separate motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to handle it as separate. I think this is something that I'd like to get more input back from staff on this. If we want to add a subsidy or increase a subsidy, we can do that. We can do that anytime we want to do that.
Separate from the motion.
Separate from this.
It doesn't have to be done today.
Because it's a general fund obligation and not coming from ratepayer funds anyway.
And because it's a reduction.
And because it's a reduction.
Versus an increase.
We just couldn't increase it.
Right, I got you.
So, but I'd like to get a little bit more information as to refining the numbers, as to how many people that affects and what that does to the general fund number.
Got it, okay. Mr. Chalmers-Chella, are you willing to
No, I'm okay with that.
set this aside for the moment and come back to it in a subsequent meeting?
Just to give clarity, though, so that's what I did research before, and it's around 650 accounts average, and it's going to charge 6,500.
Okay, we're, we're about to, in January, launch into a whole planning series of meetings about the budget. That's probably a good one to put onto that list.
Yeah, I know, it's going to start January 22nd. You know, the test goes to them. That's all I'm saying, you know, it's next month.
I got you.
So if you can give them some.
Okay, so then if I can summarize, the alternative motion is, as we discussed, approving the, approving the item absent the bulky and hazardous waste charges and also providing a $10 subsidy to that group of low-income residents. So is there a second for that motion?
Is that how you want to do it?
I don't want to do it. What's the, I mean, do we have to, which, which order do we take these in?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Councilmember Howell has a motion on the table. It's been seconded. So if she is not willing to amend her motion, the motion is ready for action.
Okay, got you, okay. All right, well, then we have a.
So, and I appreciate your comments, YK, but I'm not willing to amend the, the original motion. I'm happy to have a conversation when we can get a little bit more refined data rather than changing it on the fly. When I want to know what the exact numbers are that are gonna, that are gonna increase the amount of subsidy coming from the general fund, given that we are, we approved the FPO OA contract on the consent calendar, and we know that that's gonna have an effect on the budget.
Not a problem, I'm open for that, but just want to make one comment. By just doing the free bulky waste, it's going to add 213,000 to general fund. Just want to put that out there, that is just came now.
No, it doesn't.
Not to the general fund, it goes to the enterprise fund.
Hey, I'm so sorry, it's at the end.
But it also doesn't, but YK, it doesn't simply add to the, to the fund for that service. There's a significant cost associated with that.
No, I'm just, I'm just bringing that, that's all.
But I, but I don't want you to think that the number jumps by a couple hundred thousand dollars. There's a cost associated with disposing of those hazardous materials that get picked up and all the bulky waste that gets picked up. That's not free. To the city, we have to pay to dispose of it.
Okay.
Okay, it's okay, Mayor, you can go ahead. The, the point I'm making is we were about to charge for a first bulky waste $25, which can generate $200,000. And the second and forward, it's going to generate another 13,000. Now this council is going with no charge for bulky waste. I'm just putting that out there, that's all, thank you.
But, and part of the reason for my willingness, because as you know from our previous discussion, I was not willing to not charge for that, but I believe that the input that we got back from the public hearing is in fact accurate, that people will start pouring waste oil down, down storm drains and that we'll find out on White Rock that people are dumping sofas and all sorts of stuff because it used to happen. It used to happen south of the freeway before that construction started, and I don't want to see that start happening again.
I just want to make that clarity. I'm so sorry, Mayor, it's hazardous waste, bulky waste, they are two different things.
Two separate things, that's right.
Right, so the example I got from, you know, Mayor, Councilmember Howell is hazardous waste. So bulky waste is slightly different.
No, that's when I was referring to sofas being dumped on the side of the road. That's the bulky waste that otherwise gets picked up.
Similar but different problem.
I'm good, you guys are going to take a look at it again. You all have the same feeling as I, like giving them something during this tough times.
Very good, thank you. Rosario?
No questions.
Okay, all right, fantastic. All right, we have a, a motion and a second on the table. Why don't we call the roll for this?
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. All right.
But I, but I am happy to have a discussion sometime next month or early February.
Yeah, we should, for sure.
Yeah.
We'll note that for our, our special meeting in January.
Yeah, the sooner we can get them before the tester hikes.
Okay, let's move on to item 27.
All right, item 27 on your public hearing calendar is City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, Folsom Ranch, amended improvement areas number three and improvement area number seven. We have a series of resolutions to consider and two ordinances as identified on the agenda.
Just a heads up to everybody, if you don't know already, this is another one that has a prescribed set of steps that we need to go through to approve each of the various resolutions. And we will need to be taking, we'll need to take a, a motion and a second on each of them as we go along.
Sounds good.
That is correct. So I will make my presentation short. This is part two on CFD 23 Improvement Area Three and Improvement Area Seven. As I mentioned last time, landowners requested to amend Improvement Area Number Three boundaries to exclude the property that's expected to be developed into traditional market-rate single-family residences. The property that will still be remaining within the amended improvement area three will include only property to be developed into active adult, single-family residences. And then the property that is removed from the area, Improvement Area Number Three boundaries will then be designated as the new improvement area number seven. And we saw these maps during my last presentation. The thick border on the outside is the current improvement area number three. The striped area will be the new improvement area number three. And then down in this small part here on the left will be the new improvement area number seven. On November 9th, 2021, the City Council approved Resolution Number 10747, Resolution Number 10748, and Resolution 10749. They were all the first steps to this process. And in doing this, we will have these two separate improvement areas. Improvement Area Number Three, there'll be 919 active adult, single-family residences with a property tax rate of 1.65% to 1.68%. And Improvement Area Number Seven will have 211 traditional market-rate, single-family residences with a property tax rate of 1.87% to 1.88%. And these are the resolutions that you have before you. I won't go through all of them because the mayor will be doing that as part of the process, but I'm here for any questions.
Okay, any questions from anybody?
No questions.
No, okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. It is now in order for me to open that public hearing, a consolidated public hearing on two things. The first is the modification of Improvement Area Number Three within the City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, also known as Folsom Ranch, to amend the boundaries of Improvement Area Number Three, amend the rate and method of apportionment for Improvement Area Number Three, and amend the appropriations limit and maximum bonded indebtedness for Improvement Area Three, Number Three. And secondly, the designation of Improvement Area Number Seven within the district, the furnishing of specified types of public facilities and public services within Improvement Area Number Seven, the proposed rate and method of apportionment of the special tax to be levied within Improvement Area Number Seven, and the proposed incurrence of bonded indebtedness in connection with Improvement Area Number Seven. It's a bit of a tongue twister. Madam Clerk, has notice of this hearing been given in accordance with applicable law?
Yes, as required by the Melrose Community Facilities Act and by prior resolutions of this council, notice of this hearing was published once for each improvement area in the Folsom Telegraph on December 2nd, and notice was mailed to the landowners within each improvement area on November 30th.
Okay, the public hearing is now officially opened. We will receive comments and questions and any protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed. The floor is now open to testimony from members of the public. At this time, all interested persons or potential special taxpayers may approach the podium and testify orally or in writing for or against the aforementioned items.
Mr. Mayor, you have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, anybody present in the room like to speak on this item? Anybody on the phone like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing done, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, Madam Clerk, does there exist a majority protest against the aforementioned items related to Improvement Area Number Three?
No written protests have been received from the landowners within Improvement Area Number Three. Therefore, a majority protest does not exist.
Okay, at this time, because a majority protest does not exist, is appropriate for the City Council to consider a resolution to call a special election within the district for Improvement Area Number Three. So I will entertain a motion on item number 10767.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, pursuant to Resolution 10767, the election for modification of the boundaries, rate, and method of apportionment, appropriations limit, and maximum bonded indebtedness for Improvement Area Number Three is now open, and the clerk may conduct the election. Madam Clerk, have you received the ballot from each landowner within the Improvement Area Number Three?
I've received the ballots and finding that all ballots in that election have been submitted, declare the election closed.
Okay, could the clerk proceed to canvass the ballots for Improvement Area Number Three?
I've completed the canvas of the ballots for the special election related to change proceedings for Improvement Area Number Three in the district held on December 14. The canvas was as follows. 241 votes were cast in support of the measure and zero votes were cast in opposition to the measure. Therefore, the measure was approved with a 100% vote in favor.
Excellent, then we can consider Resolution Number 10768 if there is a motion.
I'll move it, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes, okay. Madam Clerk, does a majority protest exist against the designation of Improvement Area Number Seven, the furnishing of specified types of public facilities and public services within Improvement Area Number Seven, the proposed rate and method of apportionment of the special tax to be levied within Improvement Area Number Seven, the proposed incurrence of bonded indebtedness for Improvement Area Number Seven?
Yeah, no written protests have been received from the landowners within Improvement Area Number Seven. Therefore, a majority protest does not exist.
Okay, at this time then, because a majority protest does not exist, it's appropriate for the City Council to consider resolutions to designate Improvement Area Number Seven, to declare the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness within Improvement Area Number Seven, and to call a special election within Improvement Area Number Seven. So I will entertain individual motions on Items 10769, 771.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on 10769.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
And I'll move 10770.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 10770.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. And we need a motion on 10771.
I'll move 10771.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on 10771.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
I'll move Resolution 10772.
Hang on just one second. I got, I got a little bit more script to read.
Too much coffee tonight.
We're gonna get there in a sec.
Sorry, sorry.
Pursuant to Resolution Number 10771, the election for incurring of bonded indebtedness, the levy of the special tax, and the establishment of the appropriations limit for Improvement Area Number Seven is now open, then the clerk may conduct the election. Madam Clerk, have you received the ballots from the landowners in Improvement Area Number Seven?
I've received the ballots and finding that all ballots in, in the election have been submitted, declare the election closed.
Could the clerk please proceed to canvass the ballots for Improvement Area Number Seven?
I have completed the canvas of the ballots for the special election related to Improvement Area Number Seven held on December 14. The canvas was as follows. 61 votes were cast in support of the measure and zero votes were cast in opposition. Therefore, the measure was approved with a 100% vote in favor.
Okay, now I will be happy to entertain a motion on Resolution Number 10772.
I'll move it.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on 10772.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes, okay, and then our final two items related to this are first readings of ordinance number 1321 and 1322. So these will come back to us after we give them preliminary approval this evening. So I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 1321.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chella?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. And one more to go.
I'll move introduction and first reading of 1322, ordinance 1322.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes, at long last, thank you very much for everybody playing along there.
Yeah, I have one comment for that one.
Yes.
Stacy, I know you were.
Can't talk about it anymore.
No, it's okay.
I'm kidding.
It's more making those visible to the buyers and all those people. They realize when they see the county tax written, right? So how well, what else we can do? I know, people has to hear eight times before they can register it, right? So anything we can do, slightly improved way so that the buyers or the people living in that area of all those ones, they know that, okay, this is what I'm signing up for besides my house rate? These are the additional things. They hear it once in a while, but that's it.
YK, part of the, part of the problem with that is that these are people, they find this out when they buy their house. So this is not, you know, unless it's somebody moving from one house to another, we can't contact people that don't live here yet. So this is all in, you know, the million pieces of paper. You're a realtor. The million pieces of paper that you sign at the title company, that's one of the pieces of paper that's in that packet.
Agreed, I'm talking just, you know, Folsom South especially, there's a sales office and all the salespeople. Anything we can do to help the buyer, that's all I'm making it here. I know this is closed, that, I get that cause because of the Folsom South.
Is that something that the realtors have to disclose? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, your next.
That and airplane noise.
Your next item is Item 28, Public Hearing. This is Broadstone Estates Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Extension, southeast corner of Placerville Road and US Highway 50, including Resolution Number 10759.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, Councilmember Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. Good to see all of you this evening. The project before you this evening is a request for a three-year extension in time for the previously approved Broadstone Estates subdivision. Here's it. Catch up with my graphics?
Well, you did only bring two things before us, so not 12 and a half an hour of talking.
This is a city map showing the location of the Broadstone Estates subdivision in the northeast corner of the Folsom Plan area. The project was originally approved back in two thousand and seventeen by the City Council. It's an eighty-one unit, single-family residential subdivision. In August of two thousand and nineteen, the City Council approved a three-year extension in time for the subdivision map. Earlier this year in August, the applicant submitted a timely letter to the city requesting an additional three-year extension for the subdivision map. And as the council probably remembers, in September of this year, the council approved ordinance one three one seven, which allowed tentative subdivision maps to be extended up to a period of six years. And so the applicants previously been approved for three years are asking for three, three more years to reach that six-year maximum to be consistent with state law. This is a master plan exhibit for the Broadstone Estates subdivision, as I noted, eighty-one single-family lots.
Can I ask a question, can we back up to the first slide?
Does that really say Lincoln Highway on there?
I think it does.
Thank you.
As I noted, the applicant seeking a three-year extension in time for the subdivision map. They submitted a timely letter to the city. The applicant Elliot Holmes is here this evening. Their, their goal is to start work by next summer and do grading work by next summer. They are not proposing any changes to the subdivision. They are not proposing any changes to the conditions of approval. The product was reviewed by the Planning Commission at its November third meeting, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension. And staff respectfully forwards that recommendation to the City Council this evening for the extension. I'm happy to answer any questions you have this evening, and the applicant is also here as well.
Okay, council, any questions?
Thank you for your mask.
I'm not sure you know which mask this is quite yet, though.
Wait, Bulldog's go.
It could be Folsom High School.
Could be.
Or Gonzaga.
I have no questions.
I'm going with Gonzaga, given that it says G.U.
That's where a lot of Mr. Banks's money goes to.
A lot.
Oh, is that right?
Gozags.
That's why they call you Mr. Money Banks.
Mayor, I don't have any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, fantastic.
I'll move resolution number one zero seven five nine.
We need to, we need to open public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this particular item? Or anybody on the phone who would like to? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Resolution one zero seven five nine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
All right, that takes us to item twenty-nine, Folsom Heights Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Extension. This is at the northeast corner of the Folsom Plan area with resolution number one zero seven six zero.
Next project before you is going to look eerily similar to the project that you just reviewed. This is a request for also a three-year extension in time to a previously approved tentative subdivision map for the Folsom Heights subdivision. Here's the same graphic with the Lincoln Highway on it. You can see the Folsom Heights subdivision located up against the city border on east, boarding Eldorado Hills.
Seriously, how old is this drawing?
I would have to check with Google, but it's probably a number of years old.
Wow. I mean, the Historical Society would be impressed if this is being referred to as the Lincoln Highway, but not a lot of other people would understand what that meant.
This subdivision also was approved back in two thousand and seventeen by the City Council. It's a five hundred and thirty unit subdivision on a site that's a little under two hundred acres in size. A three-year extension was granted by the City Council in two thousand and nineteen for this project. In August of this year, the applicant submitted a timely request, again, seeking a three-year extension in time for the subdivision map. And again, the City Council approved the ordinance, which allows applicants to request up to six years in time for subdivision maps consistent with state law. This is a graphic showing the master plan for the subdivision, again, right up against the county line. I noted they're looking at for a three-year extension in time. The thing that has changed with this project is Elliot Holmes has acquired the property from Folsom Heights LLC, so that is one change. In terms of timing, again, they're looking to do grading work by next summer, submit civil improvements hopefully later this year or early next year. There are no changes proposed with respect to the subdivision map. Staff does support the extension. The Planning Commission also did review this at their November third meeting, and the commission also recommends that the City Council approve this three-year extension in time. And with that, again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the applicant, I think, is still here.
Yes, patiently waiting. Any questions from the council? Okay, I'll open public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this particular item? Or on the phone who would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing done, we will close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move resolution one zero seven six zero.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on ten seven six zero.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
My only other comment in this is that I'm glad that Elliot's going to be doing this.
Yeah, yeah. And for those who are eagle-eyed, there is still a Lincoln Highway sign designating Sutter Street as part of the Lincoln Highway.
Because it was part of the Lincoln Highway.
I know.
And so was.
Said, for those that would know, I'm one of them.
No, and, and just as a reminder, where the Orangeville Avenue Bridge is, that was part of Lincoln Highway as well.
Yes, indeed, yes. We're historic in so many ways. Okay, item number thirty.
This will be your last public hearing of the night. This is resolution number one zero seven seven seven. A resolution of the City Council approving the sale of surplus land located at three hundred Percifer Street, property to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento for purpose of developing affordable housing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Pam Johns, Community Development Director. This item before you is about the sale of vacant city-owned land at, located at three hundred Percifer. And let me make sure we're set here. There we go. This is, as a reminder, this is land that the city had deemed surplus, which means essentially no longer needed for city purposes. I've prepared a few slides for you this evening highlighting the background and process getting to this point. I've also asked the team from Habitat for Humanity to present slides about their program, proposed project, and the schedule process moving forward, if that's the will of the City Council. So they will be here after me this evening to, to enlighten you on their program. The city purchased this property sixty years ago and used it for a wide variety of purposes. Then in two thousand and seventeen, City Council approved demolition of the structure on the site and rezone the property from commercial to residential to be more in keeping with the development pattern across Percifer and, and down Percifer. At that time, it was also moved into the Percifer Dean Historic District Subarea and is subject to compliance with the design guidelines for that area. City Council directed staff to subdivide the property into five single-family lots consistent with the Theodore Judah Historic Lotting Pattern in the area. More recently, in September of two thousand and twenty, City Council declared the land a surplus formally for the purpose of developing at least five for-sale affordable houses and started the land disposition process. So just a quick look at the site. This approximately one acre site's on the northeast corner of Coloma and Percifer. Again, surrounding uses include residential, religious institution. There's a small office commercial and a newly developed senior care facility. The subdivision of the land that was previously directed, directed would create the five lots and remainder access road. I'm going to just point to that here. So there's, there's frontage on both Percifer and Coloma as well as alley access. The five acres in the Theodore Judah Lotting Pattern would, would include a remainder parcel in order to have additional access and EVA from this, from this dead-end alley out to Percifer right across from Remzy Way. It's important to note that the land disposition or sale is subject to the State Surplus Land Act and that there were several new requirements to that act that went into effect at the beginning of this year. So this slide shows the key steps in that process. After the City Council declared the land surplus, we submitted a notice of availability to public agencies and registered housing developers with the state Housing and Community Development Department. That was a sixty-day notice of availability. We received two letters of interest, one from Habitat for Humanity and the other one from Retraining the Village, another nonprofit organization. We then commenced a ninety-day negotiation period with both parties. And at the conclusion of that, at the conclusion of that negotiation period, we received formal proposals from both groups. We then did an analysis and submitted all of those materials to the state for review and consideration. They looked at that information and determined that city had complied with the requirements of the Surplus Land Act. They looked at the details of the two proposals and identified that the city is required to give priority to Habitat for Humanity because they proposed the greatest number of affordable units with the deepest level of affordability. So now I'm just going to show you briefly what, what was part of that proposal, which was to create a total of ten for-sale affordable housing units on this site. So essentially, two housing units per lot, one primary structure, about twelve hundred and fifty square feet, three and four bedrooms at the front of the lots. So the orange square is here. And then smaller, about eight hundred and fifty square foot secondary dwelling units along the alley here that would be more two-bedroom type units. Because of some unique provisions in state law about accessory dwelling units, Habitat for Humanity would actually qualify to be able to sell these homes separately with a tool like tenants in common. And so there would be ten for-sale affordable units developed on the site. The examples that are shown here from a design perspective were given as an example of something based on, that, that might fit in the area but is in no way intended to be any kind of formal design. The design review would go through, be required to go through design review process, reviewed and, and acted upon by the Historic District Commission. So as part of the proposal, we received a financial plan from Habitat that outlined, you know, their assumptions and estimates about the cost of doing this development. At the end of the day, the total cost per unit, given land value or land sale, off-site infrastructure design permitting and home construction is an average of two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred per unit. So that seems really low, and certainly it is. And one of the major components of the Habitat model is that they, they get their land at little or no cost. They have a, a, a lot of volunteer laborer for the home construction, and they require sweat equity of those, those homeowners that are going to be part of their program. And they'll talk more about that in a few minutes. So you can see here we had an estimated land value of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the five lots. That assumed, again, the subdivision of land. And what we're in front of you to discuss tonight is the sale of that land. And for the Habitat component, again, a, a critical piece of their success in developing for-sale affordable housing is ensuring that the land cost is, is given at little or, or none to them. And so we have an example here provided by Habitat of several projects in the area. And you can see that, that many of those properties were, were given to Habitat to develop for-sale affordable housing. And then some were paid at a very low cost through that process. I want to just conclude by talking about the many benefits of the project and then the, the recommendation in terms of the, the terms of sale. So this implements the City Council direction in two thousand and seventeen and more recently, two thousand and twenty. It implements the, the housing element that was adopted earlier this year in terms of providing affordable housing that meets the, the needs of the, the regional housing needs assessment, helping us meet the regional housing needs assessment for households with income levels at low and very low levels. And provides a housing type that we don't currently have in terms of detached, single-family homes. The only for-sale affordable home projects that we have in the city are condos and a very few duplex structures. We also have programs about utilizing the city's land, surplus land that's not needed for the purposes of affordable housing. This, when we talked about the direction with City Council in September of two thousand and twenty, there was discussion at that time about the challenges that we would face, likely, given the land values in Folsom, to, to create a for-sale product type. But that was the direction of the City Council, not to create rental housing on this location, but to work towards creating a, a for-sale affordable project. We also think this is a, a good fit for the neighborhood, that this project site has the opportunity to establish housing that would enhance the character of the neighborhood in, in this particular area. The scale of housing that is proposed by Habitat is very compatible with what's across the street. Many of the houses on Percifer have single-family garages and are a smaller scale and have detached garages or second units on, on those sites. So with that, we're recommending to the City Council the sale of three hundred Percifer with the following terms, that the property be subdivided into the five individual residential lots. It be sold to Habitat, Habitat for a total sum of ten thousand dollars to create at least one for-sale affordable housing unit with an additional smaller secondary unit on each lot. The transfer, the home, the ownership of the property is subject to regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants, meaning that this would stay affordable for a minimum fifty-five-year term. And that the city will work with Habitat to secure funding for what we're calling the gap financing of the infrastructure. And we feel confident that most of that can be accommodated and that's something we would work towards over the next year period. So with that, I'd like to, to turn it over to, to Leah Miller, who is the president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Chapter of Habitat for Humanity, and ask her to share with you her presentation. Leah. And then you can just advance the slide here, and if you want to use the.
Okay.
Yeah, are there any questions for Pam before you go?
Pam, just clarification, those homes will stay as affordable fifty-five years after that.
A minimum of fifty-five years, yes.
After that, they can be just like any other house.
Yes, but I think what you'll learn through Leah's presentation is that, you know, really, the goal is to have, have that continue in perpetuity with their organization's involvement.
But otherwise legally, they can be.
That's the minimum that's required with the regulatory agreement attached to the action tonight.
Thank you.
Yep.
I look for that.
And just further clarification on that, that's required by state law, correct?
Thirty years is required by state law.
Okay.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you so much. Nice to, to be here with all of you, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and community of Folsom. My name's Leah Miller. I'm with Habitat for Humanity. I'm joined by some of my colleagues here tonight. Our Director of Construction, I almost forgot your name, isn't that crazy? Michael. I work with him every day. Fair, who's our controller, and Anne, who works in Forward Plan and Special Projects. And we're thrilled to be able to be here tonight to share with you a little bit about Habitat for Humanity and the opportunity to partner with the city of Folsom and develop some affordable, affordable home ownership here in, in your community. You're probably very familiar with Habitat in the sense that we are a large organization by name. We are a large international organization. But Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento is a community-based nonprofit here in Sacramento. And while we do share that very large name, all of the fundraising that we do happens here locally in our community. We don't get money that comes down from the mothership, so to speak, from Habitat International. All the funding that we raise comes here locally. And we have a local Board of Directors and volunteers that, that help us do what we do for the past thirty-six years, which we've been serving Sacramento and Yolo Counties. Our main programs include three things, affordable home ownership through new builds and rehabs, our Neighborhood of Vitalization Program, which includes home repairs and community projects. And those home repairs are efforts to help people stay in their already affordable homes and preserve the affordable housing stock in our communities. And then our Restore, which is a Goodwill meets Home Depot sort of store off of I-5. And the proceeds of that store help to generate revenue to build more Habitat Homes. As we've been in the community for thirty-six years, we've built and repaired over three hundred homes here in Sacramento and Yolo Counties and annually serve about eight thousand individuals through our builds, our repairs, and our community projects combined. And annually, we engage about two thousand volunteers who put in more than twenty-five thousand hours. Just as some quick, relevant developer experience to share with you, we have a development currently going on in South Sacramento. There's thirteen homes that we're currently working on. We have completed three homes, and we have two homes that will be dedicated this weekend. And I have some dedication flyers to leave with all of you, so that you can come out, if you're interested in coming to our dedication, to see with this, the ceremony that we have, where we bring together the community of people that helped build these two homes as we dedicate these homes and the keys to the, the new homeowners are passed over. Another exciting development that we have that's coming up is also in South Sacramento. It's seven and a half acres, and it's being done in partnership with Mutual Housing. You may be familiar with them, they're an affordable rental developer. They will be building a hundred and five single, a hundred and five multifamily affordable units, and we'll be doing eighteen Habitat single-family homes and building a community together. It'll be the first of its kind in our region where there's both affordable home ownership and rental combined. And you're familiar with this, Pam just went over these pieces here. We're proposing to build five single-family and five ADU homes, all affordable home ownership through tenant in common. For qualified families, that Habitat will qualify earning between thirty and eighty percent of Sacramento County's area median income. And as Pam shared, these are just sample floor plans, or elevations. These are homes that, the, I will note that the landscaping in the front does not notate the typical drought-tolerant landscaping we do, but it does, is representative of the elevations of floor plans that we have done in other developments. And we're proposing the, the single-family homes themselves to be about twelve hundred, twelve fifty in square feet and to be three and four-bedroom homes, and the ADUs, which have not yet been conceptualized, to be two-bedroom, two-bath homes. And we do have a sister affiliate in Buick County who did this model and is currently doing it and is having great success with it. We estimate that it'll be about two years to complete with the start of infrastructure in Q-three, two thousand and twenty-four, and construction starting in Q-four, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-six. And I thought it'd be helpful to share a little bit about how Habitat works and the families that we serve. It's of note that. It's of note that all the pictures you see throughout this are all families that we work with and volunteers that we work with. But I thought it'd be great to share with you a little bit about Habitat and how we qualify families, because a lot of folks think that Habitat gives Habitat homes away, which couldn't be further from the actual truth. Our families actually purchase their home after being qualified. And to qualify, they must demonstrate a need, such as living in overcrowded or substandard conditions and paying more or paying more than 50% of their income and rent. And they have to contribute 500 hours of sweat equity, as far as their willingness to partner. And one thing Pam didn't notate when she was sharing about how the cost of our homes, yes, it's due to volunteer labor and things like that. And the land cost is typically is at low cost or without cost. But another piece of that is our SAFE Act exemption. Because we're a self-help affordable home builder and our homeowners put in 500 hours of sweat equity, we're exempt from the SAFE, it gives us SAFE Act exemption, which means that we do not have to pay prevailing wage. So you'll find that the units that we build are quite less expensive than a multifamily unit that you may see. And they have to show that they have a demonstrated ability to pay, meaning that they can take on a mortgage, a 30-year mortgage to purchase their home, which is affordable for them. And their mortgage and payments that they pay monthly include principal, property taxes and insurance. And I share with you just a quick example of what it looks like to be a family, who's a family of four earning between 30 and 80% of area median income. Looks like they're earning between $27,000 and $72,000 annually. This is a quick slide that shares with you where our generous support comes from, from corporations, individuals, events, faith communities and a revolving fund for humanity. And what that means is that when Habitat homeowners make a mortgage payment, their mortgage payment goes into helping to build more Habitat homes and volunteer muscle, of course. All of our Habitat homes are built to ensure that the mortgage is affordable, but also that it's affordable in long-term from a utility perspective. They're energy-efficient homes with solar, all-electric and EV-ready and drought-tolerant landscaping. And all the Habitat homes do sell at appraised value to help ensure that it reinforces the values in the surrounding neighborhood. And the mortgages are zero-interest equivalent. And the mortgage payments themselves are what makes it affordable. It's structured to be no more than 30% of their monthly income and is secured by a deed of trust. And it's really more than a house. It helps to build financial stability and empowerment, physical and mental health, equity-building and educational outcomes and workforce development opportunities to help bring out the trades on our job sites. They get the opportunity to come out to Friday of community colleges, do some of their coursework on our job sites. And the question that a lot of folks ask, well, what happens if someone wants to sell their home? Well, I can tell you that looking back over the past 20 years, we've only had six Habitat homeowners want to sell their home. Because, well, it's affordable and it is stability and it's strength and they're able to have self-reliance, but also because they won't find another opportunity to pay a monthly mortgage amount at the rate that they're paying with their Habitat home. The reason why some people may want to sell their home is perhaps they got a job out of town or perhaps there was a dissolution of a marriage or something to that effect. But in the event that such should happen, Habitat has the first right of refusal. So that means if you would want to sell your home, you would need to come to Habitat and talk to Habitat first. In some cases Habitat will choose to buy back the home. And in some cases, we may say, you can go ahead and sell it. But in most cases, we do end up buying back the home and putting another Habitat family into that home through the same process that the initial family went through. And there's a Habitat equity sharing agreement, which is a silent second, that helps to prevent the family from selling the home and receiving a windfall from proceeds with an appreciation on the market. The proceeds that Habitat does capture in the event of a resale or when a mortgage is paid off goes right towards building more Habitat homes. And of course, there's the regulatory agreement that Pam mentioned with a deed restriction for 30 to 80% of AMI for future homeowners. And here's like a timeline that we put together that kind of shows, you know, if we're able to move forward with your approval tonight, the next, you know, six to nine months, we'll be working with the city to work to find financing to fill that $1.1 million gap. And Habitat will be working with architects and engineers as well as the community to hold design workshops and move forward with conceptualizing the development as a whole. At the same time, doing community outreach here in Folsom to build a stronger relationship in this community with churches, businesses, nonprofits and schools. And as we get closer to the actual development host orientations for those that are interested in applying for the opportunity to purchase one of these homes. And as I said, infrastructure would be projected to start in Q3 of 2024 and construction start in Q4 of 2024. And that is about it for me.
All right. Any questions from the council about any of that?
I have a question. It's really more of a hypothetical. Someone calls, a family qualifies for a home. Five, 10 years later, they buy a second home. Are they able to rent out this home or do they have to?
No, one of the things that they always need to be their primary residence.
Okay.
Good question.
Anything else from council members?
Having sat here for a long time, I'm just glad, and this was Pam was in Pam's first go-around at the city of Folsom, when we talked about trying to find a way to build or to create ownership opportunities for lower-income folks, for affordable ownership. We had it on the books for a very long time. Not a single unit was ever produced. So I'm just really, really, really happy to see that you guys were interested in this project.
Absolutely.
And I think that, I think that once you guys set some roots here in Folsom, I think you're going to find that the community is extremely generous. And that I can imagine, and you can feel free to contact me directly, but I'm sure there's a number of organizations in town and folks that would be willing to make financial contributions or help you guys work on the project. The first one I can think of that we went to a ribbon-cutting today is the Rotary Club of Folsom, so.
I would love to reach out to you and partner with you on that. Is it going to be about relationship building? And one of the things I love about Habitat is it brings, it's a community, a community does build a community. And it's one of the important parts of the elements of what Habitat does. And I look forward to the opportunity to, you know, become more ingrained in the community and develop those partnerships.
And I think, you know, the other thing that I'll offer on behalf of the rest of the community in Folsom, we have an architect sitting up here, we have a rotarian sitting up here, I'm involved in the Rotary Spouse Group. I would also recommend that you reach out to the architects and engineers in town and see if they would be willing to help, because, you know, they're familiar with, you know, local soil conditions and a lot of other things that you guys are going to have to be investigating, so.
Great suggestion.
I would be very, very surprised if they were not willing to help you guys out. So welcome to Folsom. I'm glad you're going to be here.
Thank you.
All right, well, we do need to have a public hearing, so I will right now open that public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this particular item? Or potentially participating by telephone? Okay, hearing done. I will close the public hearing. And I will also kind of share with everybody that we had a conversation at Secog recently, a workshop of sorts on creative ways to get low-income housing into our communities. And everybody was, I don't know, I guess delighted and surprised that a project like this was happening in Folsom, because we get often hit with the everything's too expensive in Folsom stick. And finding opportunities to create projects like this is really a big win. And there's some other communities around the region that are jealous of the fact that we're doing this here in Folsom, so. Okay, well, I will entertain a motion if there's no other questions.
I will move resolution 10777.
If I could just make a comment before we take the roll. I love the Habitat for Humanity mission. I love the idea of people of all different incomes building wealth through homeownership, but I am going to vote against this for one simple reason. We are selling a piece of property worth about $700,000 for $10,000. And in the past year, this council has had conversations about how we can use existing city facilities to generate much-needed revenue so that we can fund, build unfunded parks and chip away at our park's master plan and our laundry list of things that we need to do. We're having workshops next year, early next year about financial challenges and how we're going to staff fire stations and police stations and all that kind of stuff south of 50. So it's just, again, while it's a very, very nice idea, it just doesn't seem consistent with the conversations that we've been having, so. Just wanted to put that out there.
Can I make a comment? So, yes, no?
Yeah, go over there.
Good. I did quite a bit of research and we do have some internal meetings as well. And I learned the difference between giving a loan to a builder who can build affordable rental property or affordable apartments than you own it. So I did quite a bit of research on that one. Thank you so much for, you know, all the stuff it is doing. There is a thing called affordable, but affordable owning, affordable renting, which for both we are helping. For renting also, we give grants, you know, through our housing fund. And of course, that money is being paid back to the city with a 3% interest in 35 years or 45 years, whatever it is. Whereas the money we are giving it to you is giving, right? I just want to make that, you know, differentiation. I know Pam, you mentioned also in one of the slides, you know, the cost of the land is $61,000, which the city is giving. And the bottom line, you wrote one statement, like right now, if we give a $2.8 million loan to the affordable housing lender, so the cost is $55,000. I think you mentioned that one. So, but that $55,000 is coming back, but the $61 is not coming back to the city as an investment, right? Thank you. But I learned quite a bit and all the work you guys are doing, awesome. Thank you so much for creating that community. That's all I have.
So just with respect to your comment, there is an absolute intellectual disconnect to be had here. I have internalized this one as thinking in terms of the fact that the city acquired that piece of property a good long time ago. And it has certainly appreciated in value, but over the time that we owned it, we got a lot of value out of it by using it. So while it is certainly a gift and it potentially is really valuable and can solve some other problems, I'm going to vote in favor of this one as we go forward. So we have a motion in a second on the table.
And just another comment, I think it's important, and I apologize for having gone to the restroom. Our declaration of this as being surplus property required that we make this available for affordable housing. And we got two responses back. I was extremely underwhelmed with the other response. And I don't know that what they were proposing would even have been feasible. I don't think anything would have happened on the site. And so I personally am not going to look at this as if it's a gift of public funds, because we didn't, you know, that was really not one of the options. And even if we had sold the property at a higher value to this other organization, I don't think anything would have ever materialized. And I think that would have led to unintended consequences of our getting the property back or having to ensure that it was resold, because I don't think they could ever have done what they said they were going to do. So having said that, you know, I agree with Sarah's point, but we did, selling this at market rate was not an option. It's not something that we could have done. So it's a bigger subsidy that I would have liked to see, but if it means that 10 families are going to have homes in an area that's walkable to shopping and the park facilities and all of the things that that site is close to. And knowing, you know, the history of what has gone on at that site in the past, I'm just happy to see that it's going to make 10 families happy.
What's for making comments? I'll make a comment. So I found this project very favorable, because oftentimes we get asked, well, what are you doing for affordable housing? How are you supporting affordable housing? How are you helping families stay local? And I saw this project as one of the, very positive, that 10 Folsom families will be able to become homeowners. And I see it as a way of Folsom having participated in that process. And so just throw that comment out. To me, it's exciting that families will become homeowners.
Yeah, we wrestled with this one quite a bit, if you guys couldn't gather from our commentary here. But anyway, we have a motion in a second and thank you all for your good comments and thoughtful consideration. Please call the roll.
All right. Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
No.
Chalum Cherlin?
Mine is yes, in support of.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to old business.
It takes us to old business, item number 31. This is resolution number 10744, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a fiber networks installation agreement with SciFi Networks, Folsom LLC, for the installation of a fiber optic network in the city of Folsom.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, councilmembers Mark Rack, then Public Works Director. You'll probably be disappointed to know I do not have a presentation for you this evening. I do just want to summarize some of the key points that I raised in the staff report. So this is an item that was originally under your consideration at your November 9th council meeting, but was continued to this meeting in order to give staff some time to perform additional due diligence and outreach. Specifically, we were asked to reach out to the three cities that SciFi has already partnered with and under construction, which would be the cities of Fullerton and Placentia here in California and Salem, Massachusetts. We were further asked to reach out to some of our local large companies, tech partners here in Folsom, to get a read from them on the value that they saw in having a fiber network here in Folsom. Before I continue, I should point out that the local project manager from SciFi, John Marchek, is in the audience this evening. And I believe Scott Bradshaw, who you met at the November 9th meeting, is listening in on the WebEx call and they're both available, should there be any questions directed towards SciFi. And lastly, we did get some additional information that was provided to you in the form of an email from resident Bob Delp commenting on this item. With all that being said, I'll start by summarizing my feedback that I received from my contacts with the three cities. Very consistent theme of, I'd say, some frustration over fits and starts that they all went through, whether it was a combination of inexperienced contractors or underperforming contractors, supply chain issues, COVID shutdowns, as you would well imagine. And then just better quality control, quality assurance provided by SciFi. I think in every instance, they said that it was a steep learning curve. This has never been done anywhere else, so, you know, they were kind of learning as they were going. But the product that they're dealing with now or the team that they have now is better than what they started with. So they've certainly learned a lot. And I did ask each of them, knowing what they know now, would they have done this again? And all three of my opposite numbers I spoke with said absolutely. They see the potential value to their communities of having these fiber networks and the opportunities that it provides for the residents and their business owners. In speaking with the local partners, specifically I spoke with representatives from Intel, Micron, Safe Credit Union, Power School. I also had a conversation with a public affairs official from Comcast. Again, common theme amongst all of those partners is that the larger partners aren't going to see as much value in having another fiber network here in Folsom. They, the large companies, of course, have already provided or connected themselves to the internet through high-speed fiber. They've invested in that already. A couple of them did point out the value of having another fiber network to connect them to the internet to provide redundancy, you know, a diverse path should their current provider be disrupted for any reason. And several of them pointed out the value, again, to the community as a whole, you know, giving residents access to higher-speed internet connections. Smaller businesses would probably benefit greatly by having more bandwidth available to them through their connections. And then, of course, a lot of them still have employees working from home. And while none of them mandate a certain type of connection, they all, again, like the idea of their employees having the opportunity to have access to higher speed, so you don't get the stuttering Zoom calls or, you know, Teams meetings. Let's see. And again, also, you know, just the opportunity to bring additional internet service providers into the region with a hope that it would drive, you know, competition, drive prices down. prices down. And then the competitive advantage that it gives a community such as us, if we were to get out in front of what seems to be an unavoidable wave of, of telecommunications infrastructure that, that's going to be hitting our country, by being out in front of it instead of, in comparison to other agencies where they might be waiting on the sideline, you know, it might make us a more desirable community for those that are looking to relocate. So that's a summary of the, the input that I received. It's a very broad overview. Again, Mr. Marchak and Mr. Bradshaw are available, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Could you please give us a little bit more on, there is one more vendor might have approached us, Netfly, and can you add some more flavor on that one as well? That way it helps everybody as well. Because you're working with the both, I think our city is working, not you. Our city was working, and if you can elaborate that finding.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, and I should preface that by saying, in neither case, in neither Netley's case nor SciFi, the city did not solicit this, these proposals. We were approached by both, looking to, to make Folsom one of their partners, looking to put it, this fiber network in on our behalf. The item before you this evening is simply a procedural manner that allows us to allow SciFi to move forward. And it does give us a, a great deal of control over how they proceed. And we can continue to monitor, you know, how they're doing in other agencies and, and, you know, make adjustments as, as, as we see fit. Again, there is no public investment involved here. That's all, you know, privately funded. Netley, since you mentioned them, is a very similar provider. However, they are what's considered a public utilities commission provider. So they're, they're operating under the California Public Utilities Commission. So their path towards permission and their ability to operate in the public right of way is somewhat different than the path that SciFi has to follow as a non-California company that is not operating under the purview of the Public Utilities Commission. So Netley does not have to go through this agreement process like SciFi does. And all we're trying to do with this agreement is facilitate SciFi to move forward. We, as you pointed out, we are working with Netley along a different vein, but, but trying to make sure that, that we're giving them the opportunity to proceed as well. We don't have a horse in this game, as, as a couple of folks have said, you know, we, we're just, you know, trying to, to facilitate allowing the, the market to evolve. Whoever hits the ground first, congratulations. If they both decide to operate here in Folsom, fantastic. That, that's really not for us to say unless, you know, that is, you know, the will of, of the council to, to limit the number of, of people that are trenching up our roads.
Okay, so you're answering my question, I think, at the end. I'm sorry, the reason why I said, I, I love technology. I know my colleagues always looks at me, right? You know, that's my 26 years, 27 years of experience. We need that high speed fiber, no matter what. So I just want to bring that, Netley, you know, I know. Thank you, Elaine, for sharing that mag, you know, the, the, but how much, you know, we understood Netley and what are the benefits by going to SciFi? That's what I'm looking for here, right? You know, we can, they can come back and they can, again, we can start trenching, you know, another three inches or one and a half inch, you know? That's a possibility if this council agrees, but do we need that kind of thing? If there is already a, a, infrastructure is built and they are giving for the service providers, everybody, everybody is going to hop on it. Again, I, I, I don't want to go to the between Comcast and, you know, AT&amp;T and that route, but this is in front of us. How much, you know, we have done the homework before we can say Netley, SciFi go, move on, Netley may be coming later, again, one more trench going on again.
Well, again, there's not a great deal of, of homework to be done here. There are only the three cities that SciFi has actually broken ground. And in each case, with the exception of Fullerton, does have some internet providers that are using a portion of their system. I don't think that Placentia or Salem has gone live yet. And then in the Netley case, they are only in one city in Southern California that, that I'm aware of. I believe they are either fully built or very close, very small city. I think it was Solana Beach.
Solana Beach.
And, and again, you know, whether or not they have provided compet, competition in that market, and if it's driven down prices, you know, we have no information on that.
Yeah. I'm going to pass for other people.
Okay, it's, it's worthwhile to kind of think in terms of cell phone towers for a moment. There's a network of towers and lots of providers attach themselves to those towers. So somebody owns the land, somebody owns the tower, and providers of cell phone service attach their gear to the pole. The land will remain in the ownership of whomever. The fiber network will act as the tower in this instance. So that just is a simple way to understand this for everybody. I, I know you know that.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but it's, it's a good way to kind of understand why having one or two or three or four fiber networks may in fact be how the future looks. Because we already have partial fiber networks in the city from AT&amp;T and from Comcast. We're talking about adding a third tonight. We are likely going to have an offer to have a fourth one here. That's not that much different than the fact that we have probably 10 independent cell phone operators that are providing service to people in Folsom right now. So for whatever that's worth. Hang on just a second. Any other questions from the council?
I have no questions.
Okay. Carrie?
No, my only comparison would be that, I think, I, I like your, your cell tower analogy. However, that's the construction of a cell tower on a single piece of property that is either publicly or privately owned. In a lot of cases, it's publicly owned. So that does not cause the traffic disruption that trenching all over town will cause. I'm kind of not surprised at the problem in Salem with a pavement issue, because, you know, 500 years ago, when the city of Salem was founded, there were no roads. They were just, you know, cow paths. And having grown up about 15 miles south of there, I know that there's a lot of walking on cobble everywhere in the New England area. So I, you know, I would be willing to bet that there's, you know, three feet of asphalt on top of a whole boatload of cobble. So I'm not surprised that they ran into issues and, you know, and that, back there because of freeze thaw activity, it's, it's a, it's a whole different ballgame. So as I sit here right now, I'm inclined to, to give this a little bit of time and see how this progresses and see if these other situations improve. I'm worried about having, you know, the traffic implications of trenching going on all over town, particularly the way people have been driving lately. If people start slowing down again someday, when, once the, the pandemic is finally over, it's another, another ballgame. But I, you know, I think it's something we need to be looking at, but I'm not ready to do anything right now.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
All right, fantastic. We have comments from the public. Did you call our first speaker? And I, I wanted to just make sure we understand that we're considering entering into an agreement with SciFi Networks. We are not here to debate the merits of any particular other provider. So please keep your comments on the topic at hand.
Right, your first request to speak is from Ed Kurzinski.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, city residents, thanks a lot for your time here. So I'm an employee for Netley. I just want to make sure that I get to clarify any misunderstandings or identify any issues that might be encountered and also open up for questions you might have with us. So I'm a longtime local resident. Two of my children are residents of Folsom. So I have lots of skin in the game here. We have already submitted our first set of permits for work in the city of Folsom. Mark correctly pointed out, our path to regulatory oversight is a bit different from SciFi's. We are governed and have been vetted by the California Public Utilities Commission. So that, that removes a bit of burden for me all from a, from a risk perspective. Certainly, the PUC spent more than two years vetting us. Are they able to perform? Are they able to operate? They said yes. So they granted us this ability to come and do this. We are just about finished with our first city. Mark mentioned Solana Beach, 7,000 doors or 7,000 residents, so about a quarter the size of Folsom. We did it in about a year, year and a half, thereabouts. We're actively constructing in our second city, Encinitas, California, and we've gone live there. There are customers there as well. We're about to break ground on our third city in Southern California. Haven't met, can't mention that one publicly just yet, but we are. So as I mentioned, we are in for permits here. We've already received comments back from the staff on the first set. We're working through deposit issues on funding to ensure there's no cost impacts on the city. Again, I'm not here to refute or debate anything Mark said, anything the other guys have to say, just to let you all know we exist, we're here and available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I believe we might have a caller on the line who wanted to speak. Okay, hearing none.
Okay, anybody else in the audience like to comment? You got to stay on topic, but I'll give you three minutes.
I was there when Gloria started the internet. The guy who started the internet with her was the guy who hooked up the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency. I'm converting your military to disaster relief. What I was experiencing, I was at the library and Gloria, and I'm always thinking G L O R I A, because I had this guy's picture next to my bed before I moved here, who started the internet. He hooked up all the contractors that they had with the Defense Advanced Research Project. She hooked up all the national laboratories. I was speaking today to Lori at the library about the speed we have at the library. I had to go to other, other regions here in the past year, and you wouldn't believe what I've had to get through with what I had to do with your government about converting it to disaster relief. What I realized was the people who are invading, trying to realize what we are capable of doing like nobody on the face of the earth with so few people, it is totally incredible that I was able to up my speed up in Auburn with the library system they have here, is now existing in the library here. I was just speaking to her this afternoon and also to Andrew and a new guy here, Adam, who, who just learned on the internet and was hired here as a clerk at the library, and he has programming capability. I wouldn't even fathom going pluses and zeros, which is where I got started when they had the Atari computers. I was the guy who was the hacker at the McIntosh, Cooper and Berkeley for many years, 15 years at least. So when Bill Gates spoke there, he had just given $150 million to, to Steve Jobs to, to get the Apple to do the, to, to do the software for, for the, for their Microsoft Corporation. Okay, now, what I'm trying to communicate to you is that I cannot believe that I up my speed when I was at the Auburn library three levels. I went faster and faster and faster. This was beyond my belief. I could not believe that I was going boom, 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 boom. And it was incredible what I was capable of doing, only because I was challenged by the people who were there monitoring what I was doing and watching what I was doing and invading the computer. I caught them. I caught them in double, and I caught them again, because these people are the people whose money is on the line. They have industries that Elon Musk said he's going to wipe out. He ain't going to kill them or wreck them or anything else, he's going to wipe them out. And he's got 30,000 satellites on low level, which is a very quick speed, and it's getting developed, lowering the price from $425, $125, or $450. And so this, this is instilled, it's installed, it's happening, and you cannot believe what it is, but I could experience the stuff. I couldn't believe these people challenged me. And all of a sudden, I started going, whoa, watch this to me.
So is it fair, is it, is it fair for me to summarize that you want fast internet availability?
What I want is I want to see a comparison in the backbone of this infrastructure in this community is the library. The library just got the speed up. I couldn't believe that I reduced the speed of what I do every day when I go in the library from two hours to 23 minutes. I was at 33 minutes, and I did 23 minutes and other things too. I couldn't believe what I was capable of doing.
Thank you.
It was beyond my fathom of what I could do. And it's just talent from, from experience with all these, I'm, I'm converting the infrastructure of military. And it's, it's going to be something that is much more beautiful than mankind has ever seen in its own, whole, whole existence. It's totally incredible to me. I cannot believe, I'm overwhelmed, I'm overwhelmed with what you can do with the computers today.
Thank you, thank you very, very much for your comments.
It's just, I can't, it's so incredible. Thank you, people. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. This is heaven on earth.
Appreciate those comments.
I appreciate it more than everybody here.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing unless anybody else would like to comment. All right, any further questions from the council or I'll entertain a motion?
I have a resolution 10744?
I have some clarifications. No, you can move it, absolutely. We need fiber. I, I'm, I'm not denying on that fact.
Is there, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it for commentary.
Yeah, so I'm not denying that fact. So only thing is, if tomorrow another provider is coming, again, we are going to dig the 700 and 176 miles length of streets. I'm not quite there yet. So what is right for our town, maybe thinking about it, is a good idea. That's all I just want to make a comment here. You can go ahead.
Okay, yeah, it's just, you know, I, I am, I'm for connectivity, right? I think there's an enormous value in having a platform of high speed connectivity in the city of Folsom. I, I, for my regular job, go around trying to get cities and counties to increase their sort of capabilities when it comes to the internet of things. So connectivity, you know, connecting their streetlights, connecting all of their air conditioning systems, connecting everything that you can gather data from. And all of that stuff is enabled by having an underlying network of good, fast, reliable wired connections. So in my mind, while this may seem like maybe we're out over our skis a little bit, I don't see it that way at all. Fiber technology has been around for decades and decades and decades. This is something that has been around for a very long time. The trenching project that has been proposed, that's a little bit of a new thing, but it's, it's minimally invasive. That's the whole purpose of it, being the way that it is. So I, I kind of am a super fan of this idea, and I'd like to see it, you know, here sooner rather than later. And if we end up with two parallel small trenches, I'm okay with the little bit of inconvenience that, that may cause us. Or three little trenches. I mean, it's, it's a matter of making sure that every kid that goes to school in Folsom can get lightning quick homework. None of us have jumpy Zoom calls ever when we work from home. And all of our, you know, teenagers can play the latest, latest version of Full Metal Jacket or whatever game at a million bytes a second, so.
I'm right there with you. Faster connectivity?
Yeah, it's good. It's a good thing. So we have a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a comment also, please. So, Mark, I really appreciate the, the additional research. Unfortunately, it, it doesn't help to allay the concerns that I addressed at the last meeting. Again, technology is not my area of expertise, but I just have this nagging feeling that if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. SciFi has not completed an installation anywhere in the United States. The feedback from the three cities where installation is underway is hardly a ringing endorsement. The feedback that I got from the elected officials that I reached out to in a lot of cities is that this has taken significant, significant staff time. Rancho Cordova signed an agreement with SciFi about a year and a half ago. They're supposed to be starting installation in, within the next six months. I, I don't really need to be a guinea pig on this. I'd be happy to see how things go in Rancho Cordova. What do the streets look like when SciFi is done with their micro trenching? How many internet service providers are they attracting? I'm told they have one right now. They can't disclose who it is because of a nondisclosure agreement, which I understand. But, and, and I, I don't want to be clear, I'm not advocating for any other. I'm not advocating for any other. I'm not advocating for Netly. I think that the article in the Business Journal was presumptuous. But this just it just I don't have a lot of confidence in this.
Well, since since you brought up Netly, just, you know, they seem to have a a good version of this story also. But in this, in the instance of Sci-Fi, we get to choke them to death if they don't perform well because we have a private agreement with a private company. In the case of Netly, because they're monitored by the PUC, the only thing that we really, really control in the end is whether or not we give them a a permit to work in our right of ways. And we can't withhold that without really good reasons because they're a public utility. They have that designation. So we don't have, I mean, you know, we spent the last, you know, eight weeks going back and forth with PGE over some trees. If somebody, and I don't want to use Netly as an example. If somebody who is a public utility came in to do this, we would have very little recourse to stop them, correct, get them to correct things. I mean, we would have to, you know.
Oh, contraire, we just did that to PGE.
Well, yeah, I mean, there it 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 didn't come easy, let's put it that way. So in terms of the term, the the idea of the, you know, excess staff time in the Sci-Fi agreement, they're paying for that. In the case of somebody else who's, you know, run by the PUC, that's that's probably on us to keep our eyes on that kind of stuff. So given the two alternatives, I'm perfectly happy to go forward with both. I'm just saying that there is some merit to having a contract where we wrote the terms and we control the outcome to a greater extent than we might in other circumstances. And we may be making it show, we may be making a choice right now to, you know, maybe rightly, to wait and see how it plays out in some other places. But we could just as easily be making a choice that somebody who we can't control gets in the ground first, causes a bunch of problems, and this one goes away. So that that's the other possible outcome from our decision tonight. So I am not, you know, I I I work in the realm of construction and I always have. I am not optimistic that this is going to happen overnight. I have I don't have that expectation at all. I think it may take quite a few years, actually, to get either or both or any number of systems in place. But I think that journey of a thousand miles starts with one step. So that's why that's why we have this on the agenda tonight.
Mayor, could I ask the city attorney to clarify if there were another company that is, you know, governed by the CPC that that is a utility? That process is via encroachment permit, and that does not come before the city council. Is that correct, city attorney?
That is correct. It doesn't have to be Netly. It can be Netly and or somebody else.
Yeah, anybody, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so any other discussion anybody would like to have? All right, this is a good spirited one to take on. We have a motion and a second. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
No.
Chalum Cherla?
No.
And Kozowski?
Yes. All righty, moving on. New business, item number 32.
New business, item number 32, Resolution Number 10776, a resolution approving an affordable housing loan in the amount of $6,860,000 from the city's housing fund to Mangini Place Affordable LP, authorizing the city manager to execute loan agreement and related documents for the construction of 152 affordable housing units at the Mangini Place multifamily affordable housing development and appropriation of funds.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Stephanie Henry, Community Development Department. So this next item before you this evening is a request for an affordable housing loan for the Mangini Place apartment project in the amount of $6.86 million. Before I move forward with the details of the request, I wanted to honor a request by a council member to share with the council kind of a status of of previous affordable housing loans that the city has provided to various affordable housing projects. So the slide before you is a snapshot of affordable housing projects that have received funding in the form of a loan from the city of Folsom. There has been nine affordable housing projects that have received such loans in a total amount of $28.6 million. And once all of the the projects are fully constructed, the city will have assisted with 814 affordable housing units in the city of Folsom. I would like to point out that the information provided in this slide is also included as an attachment to the staff report. So if you want to refer back to it, you can find it there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, so so moving forward with the the specific requests this evening. As you recall, in January, January 26, actually, of this year, staff brought to city council a request for direction regarding two separate affordable housing loan requests for two separate projects. We had the Sage, the USA Properties Sage Senior Apartment Project and the St. Anton Mangini Place Project, both requesting funds from the city for their affordable housing projects. At the time, staff let city council know that we did not have enough available funding to request, to fund both of those projects at that time. However, based on our projections of single-family development for the 2021 year, we were anticipating that the inclusionary housing fees would be sufficient enough to bolster our our housing funds and allow us to move forward with funding both projects, if that was the direction of city council. Given that the USA project was further along in the project process and had their entitlements in place, city council approved the preliminary funding request for the USA project and directed staff to come back at a time in the future when the St. Anton Mangini Place project was further along in the process and had a funding plan, specific funding plan in place, and that additional city funds were available. So in August of this year, the project received its private activity bond allocation from the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee. And then on August 18, the project received a design review approval from the Planning Commission for the project. It's important to point out that as of November of this year, the city's fund balance for housing affordable affordable housing projects was $9.97 million. Of this amount, $5.6 million was generated from our inclusionary housing fees from November of 2020, so within one-year timeframe. Also, I would note that this this 9.97 also takes into account the last, the approved Sage project. So this is the funding that's currently available. And finally, I'd point out that the 9.97 funding availability also funds other housing, like the housing element update and and staff and consultants. So it's not all for for affordable housing projects, but the majority is slated for affordable housing projects. So moving forward with the recap of the project details from last time, nothing's really changed. This will be the first affordable housing project in the Folsom Plan area. It's located a four, 5.2-acre site at the northwest corner of Mangini Parkway and Savannah Parkway within the Plan area. The project will provide 152 multifamily, one, two, and three-bedroom units, which will be affordable to low, very low, and extremely low households. This project is considered a a family, multifamily project because it does have the three-bedroom units. And it's a great location for this type of project, given its location in close proximity to the elementary school as well as the the planned park in the area. With regards to our regional housing needs allocation, this project will provide 150 units towards our lower-income arena with two of the manager units providing moderate-income housing. And finally, again, the request for the the loan amount request is $6.86 million. Here's a slide showing the site plan for the project site as well as a rendering. Once again, this project was approved by the Planning Commission on August 18 of this year. With regards to the funding analysis, the city's affordable housing loan consultant, TDA consultant, consulting, conducted a detailed review of the developer's updated project pro forma. Based on TDA's analysis and recommendations, the loan amount of $6.86 was supported as a reasonable amount to support the project. As such, TDA recommended that the city move forward with providing a loan for that amount. However, TDA did have some recommendations to the city, specifically a recommendation with regards to the loan terms. Most notably, TDA recommended that we add an additional cost savings, a net cost savings provision to allow the city to reduce our loan in the event that the total project funding sources end up being less than the project costs. As indicated on this slide, the per-unit cost to the city or price based on our loan amount is $45,733 per unit, which is lower than previous affordable housing loans for this type of project. As indicated in the staff report, the primary reason for this is due to the COVID-19 relief package, which was passed by Congress in December of 2020, that included a permanent 4% floor for low-income housing tax credit, which ends up significantly changing affordable housing underwriting and serves to increase the amount of equity that a given affordable housing, affordable development project can can generate. So because of this new structure, St. Anton was able to to reduce their request of subsidy. What am I doing here?
Netscape.
Put that anywhere.
Is it out of battery?
No, but see, it pulled up this icon, so you just have to hit next right here. Can you hit escape now? Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. Technology is not my friend. Okay, so with regards to the loan terms, they're very similar to the previous loan terms. Once again, the amount of the loan is $6.86 million. It's a 3.3% simple interest loan with a 35-year repayment term. Repayment will be equal to 50% of the residual cash flow, beginning probably in year 15. Once again, the principal balance of this loan would be due at the expiration. The balance plus the accrued interest will be due at expiration of the loan term. And the loan term sheet does include the recommended provision for the net cost savings. I'm nervous. I did it again. Okay, there we go. With regards to, oh, in addition to the to the requested loan amount, the developer is also requesting a development impact fee deferral. And per the Folsom Municipal Code, Chapter 16.60, city council may approve a deferral of up to 75% of city-imposed development impact fees for qualified residential projects. Since this project is 100% affordable, this project does qualify. Based on our estimates of the impact fees, the total impact fees for the project will be $8.37 million approximately, and 75% of that amount would be $6.27 million, which would be allowed to be deferred. And the deferral period is a maximum of 15 months from time of building permit issuance. With that, I would like to say staff is recommending that the city council approve the affordable housing loan for the Mangini Place Apartments in an amount up to $6,860,000 and adopt Resolution 10776.
Before we start with the questions, can I just remind that we have the 10:30 rule?
I'm just, I'm going to do that. Just are there any questions on this item?
No questions.
Okay, any public comment on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, and then we're going to have to suspend our our 10:30 rule if we want to proceed. Some of, okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
And Kozowski?
Yes, okay. By custom, we don't take any items after the clock strikes 10:30. We can suspend that.
That's what we just did.
No, we didn't. We just noted on this.
We need a motion to do that.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get you to do.
Yeah.
Yes, we need to waive the 10:30.
Would somebody like to make a motion to waive the 10:30?
I just made it.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes, I keep thinking of you.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
Kozowski?
Uh, no.
All right.
Just record that as four to one.
I will.
Since I'm being a contrarian tonight. All right, item number 33, I think.
Yeah, item number 33 is appointment of a planning commissioner.
Mike, I'm sorry, just as a point of clarification. I know that I said that I was trying to waive the 10:30 rule.
Yeah.
So in case anybody goes back, we might want to revote on that item because that's not what my motion was.
Okay, for clarity, will you call the roll on a motion by Howell and a second by Rodriguez on Resolution Number 10776, an approval of that resolution?
Okay.
So just call the roll again.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
And Kozowski?
Yes, and this is why we usually don't take items after 10:30. All right, we're on to the next item.
So I'm passing down ballots to each of the council members for planning commissioner appointment. The item before you tonight is the appointment of a at-large planning commissioner, and this is the result of one of your current at-large planning commissioners relocating out of the city and necessitating that resignation. So we advertised for applications. We have received four. So if the council members will complete their ballots and turn them in, we can tally the results. So Councilmember Rodriguez votes for Bill Romanelli. Councilmember Chalum Cherla votes for Bill Romanelli. As Councilmember Howell votes for Bill Romanelli. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Romanelli, as does Mayor Kozowski.
All right, Mr. Romanelli, welcome to the planning commission. Don't worry, the agendas are only this thick.
All right, the next item before you is item number 34. This is appointment of three at-large members to the Folsom Historic District Commission and appointment of a planning commissioner to serve on the Historic District Commission. So again, I'm going to pass down ballots, but you do have two requests to speak on this item before we proceed. If you'd like me to call the speakers?
Yeah.
Okay, our first speaker tonight will be Kathleen Cole, and Kathleen will be followed by Bob Delp.
At this late hour, my notes become clear. Good evening, members of the city council, city staff, and members of the... Uh, good evening, members of the city council, city staff, and members of the public. Um, I am Kathleen Cole, and I seek council support for my reappointment to the Historic Commission as a resident member. I wish to make a few comments to elaborate on my application, which is found in your council packet. As noted in my application, I was appointed to the HTC back in December of twenty nineteen as the resident member. And as you all know well, very well, just four months later, the pandemic forced us all to manage the public's business in ways like never before. So working within the pandemic restrictions, I understood the importance of being approachable and available for residents, business owners, and locally elected officials alike, whether by Zoom, telephone calls, or personal meetings. It was important then and now that I be a good listener and open to all points of view. I have no personal agenda and evaluate each project on its own merits. I do my homework. Uh, my intent during my first term and going forward uh is to find that sweet spot to strike that balance between an owner's choice in use and design and preservation enhancement of the district's historic small-town atmosphere while encouraging a diverse range of business opportunities, all being compatible with the eighteen fifty to nineteen fifty timeframe which governs development in the historic district. I, like so many historic district residents and business owners, love this community, are proud of its heritage, and hold great hope for its future. So in closing, I believe I'm up to the task. I hope you agree and appoint me to a second term on the HTC as the resident member. Thank you very much for your time and your service to the community, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker will be Bob Delp.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council, I'm Bob Delp. I'm a resident of the Historic District. I simply want to say thank you for considering my application tonight for the Historic District Commission. I've been um monitoring the commission's activities pretty closely for the last few years and have been engaged as a citizen. And I I believe that being on the commission would give me the opportunity to engage um with the commission and with staff in a way that would be beneficial to the city. Um, I've been on the Traffic Safety Committee for the last year. I've really appreciated that opportunity and the collaboration as part of that group. The only thing unfortunate, I feel like, of of being appointed to the Historic District Commission would be needing to step down from the Traffic Safety Committee, but um I would be willing to do that, and I appreciate your support and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so um you each received your ballot for the Historic District Commission. So if you want to send those down to me, and we'll tally them up. And we also will be asking for approval of the Planning Commission's nomination of um Justin Rathel to serve as the Planning Commission's second representative to the HTC. So we'll just go down through each of these and do them all at one time. So councilmember Howell does not submit a vote for historic preservation with an indication to remain on Traffic Safety Committee. For resident of Historic District, councilmember Howell votes for Kathleen Cole. And for business owner, uh votes for Mark Daskolos. Councilmember Rodriguez did not submit a vote for historic preservation, submitted a vote for resident as Kathleen Cole, and for business owner, for Mark Daskolos. Councilmember Charlam- Chalum Cherla did not submit a vote for historic preservation. For resident of Historic District, voted for Kathleen Cole, and for business owner, Mark Daskolos. Vice Mayor Aquino did not submit a vote for historic preservation, but for resident of Historic District, voted for Kathleen Cole and Mark Daskolos for business owner. And Mayor Kozowski did not submit a vote for historic preservation, noted to prefer to hold this position open for additional applicants and for voted for resident of the Historic District as Kathleen Cole and business owner as Mark Daskolos.
Okay, all right, so Kathleen, thank you for continuing. Mark, welcome. Um, Mr. Delp, um, this is not no forever. We'd like you to continue your service on the Traffic Safety Committee. Um, and uh we'll reconsider this. I think particularly with that historic preservation position, I personally um was holding out hope that we would find some folks that have some kind of real depth in that particular area. So um uh we'll we'll keep that, we'll keep discussing that with you. All right, very good.
And the second matter before the council related to HTC is to request approval of the Planning Commission's nomination of Justin Rathel.
I'll make a motion that we accept their recommendation.
All second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Cherla.
Yes.
And Kozowski.
Yes.
Okay, we are now going to briefly um adjourn the regular meeting and convene the joint meeting of the City Council, Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, and the South of Fifty Parking Authority, um, meeting. Would you please call the roll?
Okay, council and board members, Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalum Cherla.
Here.
And Kozowski.
Here. Okay, and we have a consent calendar with two items.
I'll move consent.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Cherla.
Yes.
And Kozowski.
Yes, and I'm going to close the joint city council agenda and reconvene the city council meeting, and we have one final election to handle this evening.
We do. So tonight you will be selecting a mayor and vice mayor to serve for twenty twenty-two. We'll use the same balloting process that we did for commissioners. So I will hand those down to you now. Ballots for you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Have you received a majority protest?
I have not. Okay, so let me read down here. So councilmember Chalum Cherla votes for Kerry Howell for mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez votes for Kerry Howell for mayor. Never mind that. Kerry Howell votes for Kerry Howell for mayor. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Mike Kozowski. And Mike Kozowski votes for Mike Kozowski. So we will have Kerry Howell for mayor in twenty twenty-two.
So it is written, so it shall be. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, mayor.
So moving on, we will vote for a vice mayor for twenty twenty-two.
I like the last strike though.
All right, so councilmember Rodriguez votes for Rodriguez for vice mayor. Councilmember Chalum Cherla votes for Rodriguez for vice mayor. Councilmember Kozowski votes for Sarah Aquino for vice mayor. Councilmember Aquino votes for Kozowski for vice mayor. And coun- councilmember Howell votes for Rodriguez for vice mayor.
And once again, the plurality is for Ms. Rodriguez. Welcome to being vice mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
So that concludes that.
And you sure you didn't get a majority protest? Just joking. Okay, I.
Bailing go out yet, Krista? For the majority protest?
All right, um, we are just to city manager report and whatever comments the council would like to make.
All right.
And oddly, we actually made it by ten thirty.
Yeah, how about that?
I wanted to thank Mayor Kozowski for serving, and I thank Vice Mayor Aquino for serving, and congratulate Mayor Howell and Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, the city of Folsom is transitioning to a bi-district election system for electing Folsom city council members and wants to hear from our residents about how to split this city into five districts. The process for establishing districts is controlled by federal and state laws, including data from the federal census. The city has hired a professional demographer to assist in the creation of proposed district boundaries based on demographics and input from Folsom residents. As part of this process, the public is invited to submit district boundary suggestions. Proposed maps must be received on or before January third. You can submit either a hard copy or use an electronic tool on our website, and we have developed an informational video that is posted on our website. It explains how to use those tools. Three additional public hearings are scheduled for January eleventh, February eighth, and February twenty-second. And the hearings will provide an opportunity for public input about the content of the draft district maps. Uh, the draft maps will be published at least seven days before the January eleventh public hearing. Uh, join the city of Folsom in celebrating the spirit of the holidays by decorating your home or business and entering the Folsom Holiday Lights contest. We have five entry categories. Holly Jolly Residence, which is best overall residence. Clark Griswold, best use of holiday lights on a residence. Hollywood Christmas, best use of theme and/or fictional characters in a residence. Merry and Bright Business, which is festive commercial business display. And Illuminate the Block, best multi-house display. If you wish to register your home or business, you need to do that by five P M. on December sixteenth. And you council members, I will be advising you that I will be turning to you as judges, all five of you. So um if you're interested in doing that, and then um we'll invite those that win um the contest to come back before the city council and receive a special honor. Um, a big thank you to Folsom Water customers for answering the call to conserve. Water customers reduced water consumption by twenty-six percent in October and thirty-four percent in November, compared to the same time last year. And you can learn more about uh how to save water in your home or business at folsom.ca.us forward slash water conservation. And finally, I invite our community to join our city council, the special city council meeting uh here in this chamber at one o'clock on Tuesday, January eighteenth. This meeting will be focused on informational sharing from city staff on budget forecasting and providing direction to staff as to possible next steps for identifying community priorities and preferred funding approaches, and that's all I have.
Excellent.
And happy holidays, everyone.
Yes, YK, you get the first word.
I go with happy holidays. Happy holidays, Folsom, and I got to turn on my light while I was talking. It has been a one year as a council member. It's quite an endeavor, and my light's on in case the video. I learned quite a bit in my one year, and thank you, thank you, and thank you also for collaborating and educating me. Quite a bit I learned, and probably I can go in next meeting, those details are, because it is ten thirty-four there. And I started recently coffee with YK or coffee with council member. It's a very good way of reaching out to people, and I was debating whether it is a live or online or a coffee shop. Coffee shop is much better, because they're not sometimes coming for you, but they have no choice talking to you. So in a sense, it's working very well, and people are talking more about it. And the last time I did help our public works on the waste system, I tried to educate as much as possible. And uh one thing on that I would like to make, maybe I can take some inputs from all three of you. If you guys have attended in the past and discussed about this uh waste increases the C A state legislature has been doing, uh, they probably has to go back on the the garbage pickup weekly once they have to ratify. So uh Elaine, help me to register for C A cities. I'm sorry, I'm missing it. Cities, League of Cities.
California League of Cities.
California League of Cities. So I'm joining next month, so I'm going to bring this in front of those four hundred and eighty-two cities, see whether we can go after legislatures to change the garbage from one week to bi-weekly. That way, we can bring the rates. So I just want to put that out there. I'm going to give that a motion, but before that, I'm going to talk to three of you, anything we have done in that regard before, right? And on my coffee talks, I think my big one was public safety, the recent one. And I was promoting how well the neighborhood watch programs are working for neighbors. Even some neighbors know that there is a neighborhood watch program in there. So I'm trying to promote that one as well, and also clear out some of those concerns people has. Register your home security camera with the Folsom Police. People are a little bit frantic on registering it, but as I'm explaining, people are willing to come for, come forward to register their security cameras. Folsom, if you are listening, please, if you have a security camera, especially in cul-de-sac, you are the first house, please work with police and register your camera. It is going to help us tremendously. With that, I think uh one last request, Elaine, I know probably you may be thinking on this one. Assistant City Manager twenty twenty-two is coming. I highly recommend, and it's going to be a big help for you, so just think about it. I know you're calling us in January for money, that I'm remembering that piece as well.
We'll be talking a lot about money.
Talking about money. So with that, the other big piece which I'm working, probably I may come for city office as well, is youth in government. How do we attract more youth into government? Those are the programs I'm trying to do, and you probably can partially call it as where YK invested all his time in twenty twenty-one. That's where twenty twenty-two is going to be new chapter with a new mayor, new vice mayor, and my colleagues. With that, thank you, happy holidays, and good night.
YK, if you want a full room, take Marcus with you out, and you'll get, you'll get a standing room only. All the questions on water.
Mrs. Aquino.
Uh, just a quick note, ACAPS, which I represent the city on, Association of California Cities Allied with Public Safety, at our last meeting, we formally opposed Senate Bill two six two by Senator Hertzberg. That is the no bail bill. It essentially would eliminate bail in the state of California. So ACAPS has opposed that. I have asked Mayor Kozowski and the city manager to bring that forward for our January meeting. I'm hoping the city of Folsom will also take an opposed position on that bill. Um, congratulations to Kerry and Rosario, and Mike, I want to thank you for your outstanding leadership. Um, you are an articulate spokesperson for the city of Folsom. You run a great meeting, and you are a very calming influence on this council, and I want to thank you.
It's my pleasure. I will make my comments very brief and just.
Mike, thank you for your service, vice mayor. I just want to make sure.
I'm here for you, man. I I just want to say um thank you to everybody. It's been delightful to serve as the mayor here in Folsom, and and to do it with with uh with Sarah and all of you guys has been has been great fun, in spite of all the challenges that come along with having to chair these meetings and play referee every once in a while. Um, and uh the S T A meeting last week, we found a clever way maybe to extend the fee on the abandoned vehicle thing, possibly. If every city makes a resolution to do so, we may be able to extend that without having to go back to voters right away as a stopgap. Um, and not much else came of the S T A meeting, and our S A C O G meeting is to on Thursday this week. So I will report next time on that one. So with that, I will pass to you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I just want to give a big congratulations to the Folsom Bulldogs on winning, I'm not, sorry, coming in second.
Almost winning.
Coming in second. Uh, the state championships last Friday, um, I had the opportunity to head down there, and I did, and and it was a great game. It was, um, you know, they were Cathedral, Central Cathedral was a really good team, but Folsom did a great job. And so it was great to go down there and support them. I also want to encourage Folsom residents to shop local. This is the time of year that many of our retail shops um um need the support, um, which keeps them, you know, healthy through the first quarter of the next year. Um, I am very excited to serve as a vice mayor. I think this is such a great opportunity um to grow, and this is a great city to serve. And um I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a happy new year.
Madam Mayor.
The R T. board meeting was actually last night. Things are going well at R T. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but at the, the National Transit Association meeting, which was held in Orlando last month, R T. was actually named the top transit agency in the country.
Wow, that's great.
Which if you have any understanding of where R T. was about seven or eight years ago, that is an absolutely astronomical turnaround. So that's some, that's something that the whole region can be very proud of. Everything is going well at Regional SAN. That meeting was last week. No rate increases, thing, you know, life is wonderful. And this morning, we had a meeting with staff from Senator Padilla's office as well as Congressman Baer's office for continued support of the connector and hopefully moving that from simple support of the project in general to perhaps a little bit more elbow grease and getting some additional federal funding. So that, I think that meeting went very well, and we're hoping that that will lead to some future success. And the last couple of federal applications actually made it to the secretary's desk, the Secretary of Transportation's desk, without necessarily being signed. And we're hoping that the current secretary will be more in line with honoring our funding requests. So based on the amount of support that we're getting from the, from both the senator and the congressional delegation, and we're hoping that, you know, the, the staff member that we met with from Senator Padilla's office is from Davis.
Oh, geez.
Lives in West Sacramento. So we're hoping that, that that could help influence the Secretary of Transportation, who has, you know, apparently a close personal relationship with the former mayor of West Sacramento, Chris Cabaldin, who unfortunately is not, I think he's working overseas at the moment. But anyway, we're hoping that that connection will, will urge the secretary to get us some grant money.
Excellent.
With that, happy holidays. Thank you to both Mike and Sarah for all of your service over the course of the last year, especially through the continued pandemic because none of it was easy. And I want to urge everyone to please drive carefully. There's been some horrific car accidents in the last several days. It's supposed to rain again later in the week. The rain only makes it worse. The driving during the pandemic has, has gotten completely out of control. There's some national news coverage about it the other day. So please drive carefully, and everybody, and shop local. Wishing everybody happy holidays. I hope Hanukkah was great for everyone and looking forward to hopefully a prosperous and COVID-free new year.
Excellent. All right, next time this gavel raises, we will be, it'll be January eleventh, and somebody else will have it. Congratulations once again, everybody. Good night, we're adjourned.